Everybody sign in.
I mean, unless you absolutely have to work, you know, over forty that week.
Welcome, everyone. We're gonna start our workshop here is Tuesday, January twenty ninth and thirty one AM. Agenda item one, Spencer. Oh, roll on, sorry.
Good morning.
Okay, so we're gonna start the agenda item one, Spencer reading of the minutes of the workshop, January twenty two. Two, Spencer reading of minutes, special meeting, January twenty two. Twenty twenty four. Free to approve the bills.
Outside people, whatever, see anyone handling business first?
Well, we have a short agenda here today, but maybe we get through the agenda items. If the commissioners are okay with that.
CCA will be here at eleven, they wanted to kinda watch us do this, that's why I was kinda wondering.
Did you wanna?
It's up to, I'd recommend that just because they would be here to see how we do business.
Okay, so we'll move forward with the Buckeye, Mr. Bellish, we invited today to discuss rates here, upcoming rates in the county aggregate. And we've been getting a lot of phone calls and a lot of questions and.
Yeah, we can answer some for us. Okay, sure. So some of the questions I received are about the beginning of program and what happened. And so the rate we announced doesn't go into effect right away. There was some confusion on them. So it's not till April, Bill said. So people who would switch away right now would forego their four point five three for February and March though. And so they need to take that into account. So this doesn't necessarily affect. But I think that that happened right away on the next bill, your current bill. So when you go to that, that was one thing. But I did, did a couple of things. One was frequently asked by the committee. I did email this as well. We have that. The other thing was a pricing. I'll be looking at the section here. So this, this second handout has when exactly it does go into effect, so it's the April bill site. And then, so that's the first question. That next question was why, you know, why, why did it jump so high? So what we're looking at is the transmission capacity. Right in the electric section there. So transmission capacity last year was thirty four dollars megawatt. This year it's twenty nine dollars megawatt. Starting in June, it's two hundred and seven. So that's which drive all, all the price. So and then, and then the next question was about Ohio Edison, what is the rate? So right now they're about eight point one. Home country is four point five three. And then in June, the rate will be about ten or ten point two, estimated by ten point two. And then, so this seven point nine will be about twenty three percent discount. So of that too, and that's not been announced. Nobody knows that really. So that's another thing. It's if anybody opts out, they will pay. So customers can switch supplier, but opting out just means you go back from. So instead of four point five, you pay eight point one. Yes, for the first time. And then this summer, instead of seven point nine, it would be ten point two. So opting out, not a good idea. Someone wants to switch and switch, but we do know Edison rates through March of, or May of.
Now, Mr. Bellish, I, you know, watching, I mean, social media has blown up on this. Get the phone calls, Commissioner Brad, Brad and myself, they're saying that they're finding better rates. You know.
So that would be if they switch.
Yeah, so if they opted out.
But it's not just opting out, they have to opt out and switch.
Well, no, you just, just switch.
Switch, okay.
First energy will still be your.
It's a one step process. You don't have, you don't opt out to switch. Switching, switching takes care of leaving program.
Right.
There could be other fees and maybe early termination terms.
Their early termination fees, there are also monthly fees, anything lower, most of the offers I've seen are lower half month. Like a ten dollar, ten or twenty, I've seen twenty as well. It's common.
And when you're talking about maybe a difference of twenty dollars in your, I'm sorry, mark the other term a little higher. And when you're talking about maybe a difference in your bill of only like twenty dollars and then having to pay the fee, it's a wash.
Yeah, yeah. So I had a call, we did the month by month calculation. So the first two months, uh, cause he wanted to leave, was suggesting maybe the program would cost him thirty dollars more each month and then savings were five dollars. So the sixty dollars for the loss for the first two months, we took, taken twelve months to make up. So that kind of a loss and sick. Thanks. I didn't know that.
Well, I guess like one of those, the calls I'm getting too. They're upset it's going up and we explained to them it's going up for everybody. It isn't just this, that four point five three is done. It's gonna be done. The second thing is they say, well, I give this a side of their apples to apples. They said, well, I can get this right here for five percent. I can get, you know, we could go to energy, stay with Energy Harbor and get six. Energy Harbor, from what I understand, is becoming Dynergy. But in other states, it's still Energy Harbor, cause one of them, you could click on a rate, and I did it myself. And it says not available in your state. So some of those ones, when they're apples to apples, they click on it and they, they see it and they see the rate lower. But when you click on it, it's not available here in Ohio. Now, is that a PUC, the PUCO thing where there's only certain ones approved or how, how do they do that? And I encourage people to try that and realize this is still Energy Harbor, correct?
So they're in transition right now. So Dynergy bought Energy Harbor last year and they've been in the transition to do away with the name Energy Harbor. That hasn't just gone away everywhere just yet. So that, that's why. See, sometimes you see it, sometimes you don't. So I think the name.
Then we did, just to be fair, I'm pressures. Before you were here, we had Mr. Bellish in and we opted not to renew with him initially and shop the market, which we did. And we entertained bids, we opened up, we entertained bids from three other companies that came and gave a presentation, but we had multiple inquiries. And when they gave the presentation, Mr. Bellish was able to provide us the lowest rate out of the other popular ones that are out there. That was a reputable company. There were a couple, if you look online, there's a couple of fly by night type companies that have variables and fees that we didn't trust. And trusting the, the public to deal with people like that, that we had no background with, we had no history of. So he was able to come in, the next closest bill was seven point nine nine. And so and we go on with him at seven point nine zero, which isn't much of a difference, but it's a reliable service that we've had. And to, to not make the jump, why would we go higher and try somebody new when we have a proven product of communication wise or whatever with Buckeye Energy. So we decided to do that. Now, I think those rates are super high too, and, and I, I brought up instead of a three year deal, which is what Mr. Bellish wanted, we met, we got that down as low as we could to fourteen months. So we will be able to entertain this again in fourteen months and hope with the new administration in Washington, with coal, maybe getting back into production. Maybe we could see some rates come down again in fourteen months. And I gotta believe that we're being a better energy situation in America fourteen months from now than we are today. So that's why we went with the fourteen month deal in hopes that in December, we'll be able to sit down again and start to look at the following March or May or whatever and renegotiate, only with him, but open it up again to see where we are at that time in our price wise. But this was the absolute best we can do. And this wasn't just me speaking, this was the market, you know, the, the market is, is what it is and, and we could have said no and left our residents. They could have paid first energy prices of ten cents or more up to twelve cents uh, instead of the seven point nine that we're at now. It is a big increase from four point five three. But that, that deal's done, you know, that deal's expired, we're beyond that deal and we can't lock you, we could not, there's nothing we could do to lock in that rate any longer.
And I, I did a little research too. I've seen the national averages at like fourteen cents. Hopefully we never get that. I'm an all electric owner myself. But I know, you know, I could feel the pain of our residents that, you know, are, you know, upset about this, but like Commissioner Malloy said, what do you do? You know, that's all you have to offer, then being the lowest rate, you gotta go with what, you know, with the lowest rate at that point in timing, so.
I, I have a question. First of all, I want to thank you for, for coming here on such a short notice. My my question is, if the rates go down. Will your, your rate to us go down? So that would be starting in June of twenty twenty six. So the fixed price fourteen months is fixed. So the, the bulk of that price is the capacity rate that's already fixed. So everything won't go down. It's already two, it's two hundred and seventy dollars a megawatt. It's, that's fixed.
So that's how it went from, from twenty nine dollars to seventy?
Yes.
Why was it?
That's a the, the thirty. Yeah, it really is. So what happened, um, just as we were coming out of the, well, kinda during the pandemic, these capacity rates were set. So everybody was locked down, businesses were closed. So it was thirty four dollars, twenty nine dollars. And then now that everything's open, this two seventy auction done last summer. So that was back, prices were back to normal.
Is there any way that we could, we could argue that and fight that rate from twenty nine to seventy?
There really isn't. That's approved. That was an approved auction by PJM, which is the interconnection, transmission operator in this area. So
I said to PUCO, nobody controls that.
It's, it's interstate, so it's not just Ohio. So PUCO doesn't have jurisdictions for federal agency that oversees that.
So let me be clear. So a lot of people got a huge electric rate just last week. And that had nothing to do with this new rate increase.
So, so some people were paying like four, five, even eight hundred dollars for electric.
That, that's not yet though. They're still.
Yeah, just, I just wanna make everybody clear, and that's without the rate increase.
Correct? I'm not aware of other increases.
Yeah, so, so this is that gold rate. So, so when this new rate kicks in, that five hundred dollar bill or that eight hundred dollar bill is gonna be.
They were, I don't understand either. They shouldn't have got an increase because we're still locked in the four, five, three, except for they use more electric.
I don't think they got an increase. I think, I think their electric bills went that high. It doesn't matter. It's at the end of the day, what's it gonna cost them for electric? You know, that, that's the point.
So.
Yeah, well, so. What does a person on fixed income do? We have to have an auction here somewhere. And I'm not blaming you on, but you know, it's just.
Yeah, it is a, a big increase. Without the program, it would be even higher. It would be like seventy percent increase. The highways. So.
I mean, right now, I don't know. Yeah, the weather's been pretty cold, so people were seeing a little bit, but I'm a lot of people were, I've heard the same thing. They're calling, they're saying, my bill went up there four hundred. I don't, I don't see how, cause they're paying the same amount that they were paying last year. The same exact prices they were paying last year. And if their bill's that much higher, they need to check their meter, they need to do something. Maybe, I, I don't understand why it is because there's been no rate increase as of yet. They're locked in March.
And Commissioner, I think, I think they, they think the reason for that was because the rate went up and the rate hasn't gone up. I know. That's gonna be the other problem.
I think commissioners, I think a lot of times too, they don't check their bill. It's an estimated month before. That happened to me, they estimated the bill, then you, because I don't know, maybe weather related. And then you get that big dump the following month. So, you know, uh, I mean, my bill last month was five hundred and seven dollars. But that's cause they estimated the month before. So what, what our residents need to do is to make sure that they made sure that the, that month wasn't estimated and then that was taxed onto that month. Cause like you said, the rate didn't, didn't increase.
Uh, that won't be until April, April, the month of April is when it starts.
So another thing that might have happened last month was budget billing true up. So anybody who has on a budget bill was paying less than they should have been, Iowa has to treat that up. Charge that. So I, I've heard of that as well. So that, that might explain something. A lot more than normal was the budget billing true up.
Which again, has absolutely nothing to do with anything that we did here or the county did. We did the best we could to keep the rates as low as we could for the residents.
So do you think this is the lowest possible rate?
It, it was in, in December.
And it still is today.
That was.
I mean, is this still the lowest rate, excuse me, the lowest rate right now? Or is there a lower rate out there?
There could be, but it's the starting medium. Yeah, but I, I thought I saw in the contract, it doesn't take effect until March. Yeah, this one is March, April bill. But if someone switches today to a lower rate, they'll forego their four, four point five three rate. He switches to a higher rate for two months. So that needs to be taken into account.
When, when we locked in, you're going with whatever the market price was that day. We couldn't even get the price until the morning we voted. And whatever day we locked in, it's locked in, we're locked in on that for fourteen months. We could have took a gamble and said, let's stretch it on another week. Higher, we could have locked in it eight percent or, or whatever, but the trend it was going up and that's why we said we didn't lock in.
Is he locked that in or does somebody else lock that in?
We locked it in with a contract to him and then he buys it at that rate that day and locks it down.
Right. But if the rate is lower, I guess what I'm asking is, is it lower our rate? You know, that's, you know, since the contract doesn't take effect until March, if there's a lower rate, just ask them to keep that, so to that lower rate.
Yeah, once, once it's locked in, there is no change. Won't go higher.
There, there's other things too, Commissioner. You had to notify the people on a bill and that's why we had to do this in December. You gotta give them advance notice to opt out if they want to. You can't just throw it on them last minute, cause it could be higher also.
And I have noticed that some have said that they got a six nine nine rate, but it's like an eight month term. So the term is short. I don't know what happens after that.
Yeah, so that was, that was the last thing I had, was what happens at the end. So at, at the end of this program, we'll have another fixed rate. But if you sign up on your own, you go to a variable rate. That can be very high. Um, I, I just brought an example here today with this is for, this is for gas, but this is a, a customer who had Constellation, we have on gas side. They rolled to seven dollars MCF on the gas.
We're at three nine nine.
Yeah. So this is an example of what happens at the end of a contracting sign up. You do go to a variable rate. So that's another thing to program that people. And that's where suppliers make when they're met on an eight month contract, that's where they're making. Ninth month, they'll make it up. Um, but we don't do that. We'll have another fixed rate after fourteen months.
Actually, if you look at your bill, the price of the gas is, is the cheapest part of it on the bill. It's the transmission. How they get it to you is where the price, prices come in. And you look at your bill, it isn't the price you paid for that gas or the usage. It's, it's all those other things that we'll never understand. Take a, uh, Oxford MBA to figure that out.
Yeah. So here, here in Ohio, at, at four and a half, yeah, it is, but east coast, it's about fifteen cents, west coast. Here in Ohio, that's true, around the country.
Where do we get most of our energy now? And then we talked about it before, we used to get it on the Ohio River at the coal fired plant that's now defunct. Where do we get it now?
James Fessy and Harry Plank is on, like Gary are still, still operating. So it's mostly nuclear now. And of course, the local gas plant. So yeah, we'll see you going forward.
And the first, the big first energy scandal, that was an effort to keep the nuclear there or was it an effort to get rid of the nuclear?
Keep, keep the plant and coal. So that uh, you could see, you could see the issue there. Prices, capacity prices, we're just too low to make any money. Thirty four dollars. The average capacity rate's up one twenty. So thirty four dollars previous year, twenty nine year, were way too low. So that, so that was the issue. They didn't make enough. So they were adding the proposal was to add. The number was exactly nine dollars.
I have another question. Now, the township trustees, are they on their own? Do they, do they have their own uh, program? Are they part of our program?
All of the townships except Liberty and Brooklyn.
Are on their own?
Are on, those two are on their own. The rest are in the program.
Yeah, we don't, we don't have Warren. We don't have Brookfield, we don't have Liberty. And I think there was one more that, that had their own deals. The rest of them are all under us in the aggregate with us. We brokered all these townships with us.
It was Weather's deal, but they are now part of this.
So why not agree on Brookfield?
They went with a different company and that company that did a bid to us, that was hired. That's who they decided to stick with. They, they went on their own years ago and.
Was it, sorry, refuge? Was it at my boat?
The trustees.
It's the trustees, it's not.
Trustees.
Trustees.
It goes on the ballot to be approved uh, by the trustees.
Yeah, this was a ballot issue initially to go into an aggregation program. But then after it was approved that they do that, that it's individually decided. And Liberty has the one and they got Brookfield in on the deal with them. And then Warren again has the same company. You go to other counties and some of the other counties have different ones also.
How many counties do you have in the state of Ohio?
Summer County. And we work with counties for just a county building. Uh, but as far as aggregation goes, for a entire county, I have two. So. So we work with a lot of cities in Trump.
How many cities do you have?
Portland and Gerard. Dog, we have, we're a gas, Hubbard, we have a gas. So it might be some, somebody. Everybody but Warren. So, um, and the next thing I had was, you can see on the, on the chart here was yeah, county buildings themselves. So there's a group of ten, we did, these accounts are too big. So we have a group of ten and then we have a group of fourteen. And we have one account for so like to get pricing for those, renew those. Uh, those are made separate quarters. Those accounts are up. So I'd like to get pricing and then have an agenda item for two weeks from now. Read, have those read.
What are your racial rates, Tom?
Yeah, those are from the county buildings. They're just too big.
Can we get that rate for the residents? Is that the rate?
Well, that's the current rate.
That's who we were locked in from last one. That's expired.
That's expired.
Okay.
Yeah, the four cent.
Oh, that's good through Matt and, and Portland is.
So what's their rate gonna be?
So I, so I haven't, I didn't get the pricing yet. So I'd like to get the pricing, set that and have the board make a decision on that.
So and that we can shop around too. We have time to shop that around again to the other providers and do the same thing we did with the residents, see if we can get a better rate.
So with capacity prices real high, it'll, it'll be an advantage to shop this stuff. County buildings use energy more efficiently than residents. Operate at night, we're talking more using tonight, things like this. So I'm expecting a better price. So it's better to keep them definitely. So but I could gather the pricing from all the suppliers who want to bid and present that. It would be about.
Set that up here. On the agenda in a couple of weeks. On the agenda in a couple of weeks, where we're gonna wanna. I don't know if these rates are gonna change, you know, the longer you play it, I don't know. Get on that, it's hard to imagine what to start, I mean, it changes by, by the week.
Well, we were in an urgency to change things. And I see that's not much of a difference when they end, so we should be in that same urgency, I would imagine.
Yeah, the advantage is not to send that twenty one day out, so yeah, some more with, with commercial. We can go. No letters in the sentence, so we have more time. We can, um, as long as something is done in March. We can get some pricing in February and then. We make a decision in March, it would be plenty of time.
Well, I would, I would personally ask, go ahead and start rounding your figures up again. We'll reach out to the other people that wanna provide. Same thing, you know, give us our bids too by. In February or so, like we did before and. Come in and give us their pitch like we did with the other ones and then this board can make a decision on, on that.
Yes.
Mark, you're in Trump County auditor. I had this to talk about at the end of the meeting, but because it's to do with this, uh, I'd like to bring it up now. Um, last week, it was mentioned, it kind of in passing, that you wanted some kind of explanation on your website. However, nothing was done with that. So if you want something like the FAQ or something like that, let us know and we'll, oh, we'll take care of it.
Yeah, I think that'd be a good idea.
Yeah, I think the FAQ is for updating. Just a few days.
Okay.
Because they might be buried, I don't know, they might be.
I'll look, I'll look in fact because and see where you're at. Um, I didn't.
And if it is, let's look at it to see if it's as simple as terms that the public can just read and understand it.
Your office needs to look at it and decide what you want.
Right, we just need to see a draft of it to do that.
Is, is it easy to find?
I don't, I, I don't know. I just know that if anybody had put up, it was sense, I mean, sense, but. We can, we can put it front and center, but you guys need to tell us what to put. We don't make that decision. We don't make that, we don't make your contract.
Would you have a suggestion, Mr. Bellis, what would you guess?
Is this, is this a little deep when we bring it up to the.
Right, we discussed that, right, make it front and center.
And then I did, I did send in.
This here?
This.
Yeah.
Okay, commissioners, what I'd like is if we have this on here. But then if we can have a box, then, then I'll volunteer to write, even just that commissioners put this out for bid in. Fall of twenty twenty four. Uh, the contract will extend fourteen months. We shopped it around to other companies that had three bids, just something, simple paragraph to show that. We just said, just pick this discriminately. These are the questions about the program we have now. Just a little disclaimer that we did it and will be looked forward to. Re-shopping rates again as we approach the end of the fourteen month term. And I think that'll answer some questions of the public at least that this isn't something that we force on anybody or. Anything like that.
Again, I thank you for coming, but what, what would be the rate today if we were in to a contract right now? Would it be higher or lower?
Well, it's, it's too, too late for a month.
I know, I'm just sure you're sorry. I, I, I know, but it's real, I know, but you can't, you can't tell me what your rate would be now?
And it's really about the same because capacity rates are set, that's what's. There's, there's no change on that. Only a small portion of the price is variable at this point.
So it would be, it would be about the same.
Hmm, no, no, I think. I've been seeing between, um. Eight point one, eight point five. The other bits I'm seeing. Did one yesterday at eight point two five. Now there may starts, so there's a big difference between the starting date. Of that capacity, she's going up so much you. The more twenty nine dollar months you have, the more the price is gonna be. So anybody starting in May is gonna be a raise. Cheap months are gone. Every month we go in the time, go through. The price goes up. So I think you'll see a lot of area.
And that was my point, so it was, it was cheaper in December than it was in January.
Because it was a March start. It's the start date that matters, so. Um, we were able to get March, April and May. There's still, uh, averaged in to price, so anybody starting in May or June. Over eighty cents.
Again, thank you.
So I guess we'll continue, um. We have Mr. Snyder here, David Snyder, uh, who is the architect for. And he was invited here to explain that the commissioners, basically, we had any questions? Where we're at currently with the architecture and, um, I know Bill. You had worked on this along with, uh, with Mr. Snyder. Um, did you bring us up to speed? I know you had, we had received an email that's. Had mentioned the start date in April and I said, no, that's not happening. You know, we, uh, we got a lot of work to do, but.
Yeah, the plan was we always, excuse me, we always had to schedule, uh, wrap it up over the fall, we said, so that's. We are at this point, I'm gonna say ninety nine percent off. Uh, there, I mean, within a week or two of, of it. But, uh, basically, uh. Building in, and I don't know how much detail you don't, I believe she kind of has the information on it. I mean, uh, I'm sure everybody's familiar with existing dog, has a lot of issues, a lot of concern. Uh, this building is out next A W L on the site. We had a site that was about three acres, over three acres of the county. Uh, problem was it's a steep slope down to one side. It has a sanitary line and a gas line that went across the site. So of the three acres, we literally had nine thousand square feet built. Our building we're putting on is about seven thousand. So we were, I mean, it was basically spinning it into the space that we had. Uh, the building itself, I mean, I think we're at fifty kennels, uh, it's about seven thousand square feet. Uh, it was, uh, originally when it was put out for an RFQ, the intention was it would be five thousand square foot. Thirty kennels, uh, there was not a program put together at that point, so that once we got settled, we met with. Uh, the dog warden, we met with Bill and with at the time, Commissioner Cal Mason, went through it all, came up with a program. That building up a little bit inside, a couple thousand square feet as well as the, uh, number of kennels. Uh, I think at the beginning, we weren't anticipating how many offices, new wardens they had, so that part of. So we went through a number of, uh, interactions, so we got the building, uh, designed, but drawn together, engineering is done. Uh, I know we have renderings that are float around somewhere, I think we do have, uh, yeah, they're, uh, a beautiful building, I mean. Would be, uh, something worth looking at. I know there's been questions about, is there any logic in? If A W L has space, we've been into that space. I would, I mean, professionally speaking, I would want against that. There's a reason they're struggling. It's a huge metal building. With extremely high, uh, energy cost. I mean, it's an option, but I think where they're going, building we designed. Uh, if you look at it, as I said, it's a beautiful building, but it's very simple. It's a masonry building in the kennel park, uh, that has steel on the roof. The rest of the building, it's basically a wood. Building with trusses on it and it'll go up and quick, it'll go together easily, sufficiently. And Bill, I see you standing up.
If you wanna see a picture of just the outside, I mean, I have the, I mean, just we altered the inside, but the outside's the same, so if you want to see. It would kind of look like, or is it like?
Make sure that all.
Yeah, they're in my office. Um, I asked Mr. Snyder, he said if we needed to do that, he did those, but. So basically what I'm getting is this building was custom made to fit. The A W L property. Talking about that sloping and what you had done. Did we do any, uh? Any kind of sanitary sewer research, any kind of?
We did, we did a lot. We, we met with them and, uh, went through it all. A decision was made. Our hope when we first started project, we were in the tight end of the line. Part from is that line's twelve foot around, uh, I think it's something like that, but. Uh, bottom line was it was easier for us to run a new sanitary all the way out to the street. Uh. Mainly because we didn't have to dig it that deep and we already had a run out there anyway, so. You know, to give you an idea, the building is somewhat divided up. It's, it's kind of in, in four different quadrants. And just to give you an idea. This area over here is the public area. See, adoption area is where, uh, everybody that'll come into here, if they want my license or they're coming in to adopt a dog. Through money end is a play area where somebody can bring a dog out here, go in here and, you know, kind of meet the dogs. This and, and down here is kind of the work end of it. This is, uh, the main area. This is the Sally Port where they'll drive in to provide security that. Uh, even after hours, a sheriff would drive in, for example, with a dog he picked up. We have holding kennels right there. You get out, put it in, drive through and leave. Uh, we also have the, the key is just an intake and an isolation. Dogs brought in, they can be checked if there's a problem with it, they put it in isolation. Uh, the back section, which you can't really see there, I guess you can kind of see it back here, is the kennel. It's isolated from the rest of the building. So that once a dog goes through this area, clears the area, moves back, kind of the general population in the back. Front center here is the office space. Uh, it's the administration, everything in there, so. It's pretty simple, pretty straightforward, access to everything without going through things. It's, I think. Efficiently laid out. I think it functions well. I think it would serve up, uh, what they needed to do.
Very nice drawing, nice architecture. Mentioned that, uh, commissioners, taking into consideration. What monies went to do this. So, I mean, I understand that, you know, we're, we're in a budget crunch here. Um, we got three buildings to build or at least to move, Tacy's here, we got a nine one one, we got the corner, we got the dog. I think these are things that we really need to move on at some point in time, I mean. Commissioner, you say it best. We can't keep kicking the can down the road. We're gonna have to find a way to do these things.
Well, my question is. Get the architect, do the plans, how did they plan on paying for the dog town?
Bond issue, so a problem was brought up, um, by the previous boards, like you do with any other big building. We don't have it laying around, so we bought everything.
One issue on this, one issue on nine one one, one issue on Trump.
Potentially, we're gonna have to pick and choose. I don't know about that. We, we, our estimates were a lot lower than that, but.
Is that two, 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 two and a half?
We put an estimate together on this, uh, I brought that estimate, but it's basically our building. If we release it for bid and I put in spec, it's gonna be two point eight thirty dollars. Uh, the, what I did was I broke out a number of things and, and at the. Kind of the, uh, Michelle wanted me to break everything, so basically this building was a, you're skiing the bed. So I threw in a bunch of allowances, which are everything from furniture to blinds to whatever, but I wanted to list them because they're not, I mean, you may have furniture in the building or whatever, so. There's a kind of shopping list of items. Uh, that are on there.
There it is.
Yes. That was the dog on also, Commissioner. We did. Uh, we did get a two hundred thousand dollar donation from a gentleman in the past. We also talked about doing a. I understand. And, and, and we also talked about doing a community drive. Um, the Anne Wolfher Lake Building was built by donated money from the public. And with this being dogs, we also wanted to do some type of a public, private. Fund drive and see what we can raise, uh, capital raise, uh, with donations from the community for something like this. To create it to be the standards that's there. Instead of just putting up a pole building and paying for it. We thought the community would step forth and make some donations with that, which they have. With A W L and they have even with this, uh, I think about two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Was donated total, wasn't it, through? Various monies?
No, I believe it was two hundred.
That was from one person, two hundred, but there were other donations to give to friends.
Commissioners, go hard, Trump County maintenance. I was told that there's a lot of people that will step up to the plate. They won't step up until the shovel's in the ground. That's what I've been told. They won't put out their, you know, until they see exactly.
So just to, um, take out my, Mark, you're in Trump County auditor room and take out the auditor hat. I, I had met with, um, the, the charity that already exists. Uh, which helps with items for the dog. They help to the tune of, I don't know what twenty four was, but twenty three, about thirty five, oh, period, stop. Um, they, this was in the fall when we met, are willing to work on a capital campaign. To help with this, but they need to know what the commissioner's commitment is. That's kind of where I saw it. We, there was also at, during these talks and Chelsea, she, she's not here. Um, during these talks, um, they weren't sure if they were going to do a separate. Five oh one C three, or if they were just, just for the capital campaign, or if they were going to use, um. That specific charity and just do it as an option to that. I believe that what they finally came up with was that they would use. His friends. Into the, the, uh, friends of the, um, for these dogs, I think, and they actually, the charity. Um, they're going to utilize that. And the reason you would want to do that rather than having to donate. To the, to the county specifically for it is having that five oh one C three. Gives them that tax exempt status. So particularly for large donations, perhaps from corporations like that, that is more. Um, when we last met, sixty one was it? Was it November or October? When we last met, that was sort of where we left it. They were looking to see what was going to happen with the election. It was pre-election, so it was either October or very early. Um, and that was sort of where they left it. I have not heard from Michelle at all on that because my, Michelle was sort of my contact. And they haven't requested to me. I think they're just kind of waiting to see what the commissioners are going to do. My thought on this, although this. I am not saying either way, I'm pushing my love to them. Um, but. Perhaps, um. Splitting up some of the allowances and asking them to fundraise for the extras. Uh, the, the furniture, things like that, that puts line items, um, and asking them to set that as their. Goal, because when you do fundraising, you gotta set goals, perhaps setting that is their goal and then anything that they raise above that help with the fund. Uh, if that's what you choose to do. That's just my suggestion. I'm not waiting to say it your way, this is you guys. And there are other considerations. Uh, when we look at doing this, it's not just we're building a new building. It is also, um, staffing. And, and I don't know what the consideration is to on this, on what you have. To reduce it in any way, as far as the capacity, reduce it with the options that we built on here.
Problem is, is in spite of. Can the building smaller? The only way to really take the money out of buildings is to export it.
Right.
So we started reducing cattle, we started using offices, uh, you know, through the building. This kind of area. Every, every square foot in there, that where the dogs come in, the isolation, everything in there. This area over here is public, would that be held on? Yeah, but it's also one of the major things, the whole adoption.
Sure.
The offices in the middle, we did, we made a few, decided to get. There's always, you know, opportunity to, to reduce, uh, you know, I, I mentioned to you. It. It's not pulled up. I mean, it doesn't look like a pulled up building, but I can tell you that from here. Really, even the front of this is all reframed. It will be panelized, it'll go up quick. Uh, even these roofs up here, these are actually trusses on top, so. It's inexpensive construction, it's masonry. It's inexpensive construction, it's masonry, a few colors on it, and. And we were just trying to kind of give it its own identity, and give something that looks nice for the county.
And I did have some concerns that were raised, um. Hit the paper and I got a little heat from it from Animal Welfare League, they, they did come to us a year ago, needed two hundred fifty thousand dollars to continue to operate, which we gave them. Out of the county, and so I had concerns before, we're gonna put a two point. Eight million dollar building next to a building, and you can see the size of their building now. Much, much larger than ours, I mean, that thing's a monstrosity of a building they have. And my fear was, I think we need to sit down as commissioners with some of the board members. Just to see where they are financially, and of course, we're rooting for them to win, we're rooting for them to be there, they serve. A purpose with humane agents and dealing with dogs and cats that is needed in the county. But I don't want us to build all of this, and then they're struggling, they either need help from us. Or go out to bid something were to happen to them, then we have a huge building next to us that's vacant. And we're building a two point eight million dollar building next to a three million dollar, four million dollar building. That's vacant, we don't know who our tenants are gonna be, our neighbors, what they're gonna do there, and maybe is if they are hurting. Is there a way for us to combine efforts somehow and utilize their humane agents? In some space in their building, or expand onto their building? With a partnership between the Dog Pound and the Animal Welfare League? To ensure their financial success in the future and, um, and the awareness of what needs done. Because right now, we've got a lot of people that care about them, and the same people that care about. Our dogs, care about the Animal Welfare League's success, and care about Health Arts and Paws and all the other charities that are out there, it's the same person. And I just don't wanna. I, I don't want us to get into a multi-million dollar thing, and then have our next door neighbor struggling. For needs and it not be everything we had hoped, that's, that's, that was my concern. Now, of course, like I said, if we can help them in any way, we can do awareness for Animal Welfare League, anyone that's listening, donate to Animal Welfare League today if you can. But we, we should at least sit down with some of their board members, and, and, uh. One of the presidents of the board, he approached me and said, hey. You know, we don't like being in the paper exposed to our finances, well, they came to us a year ago and said, we need help, or, or in trouble. And it wasn't me going to them, and I just want to make sure this year, they're on better footing, and they will be two years, five years, ten years down the road. And we won't build what we have and then see them struggle next door to us. If there's a way we can combine up something somehow, utilizing the space of both those facilities, continue to be providing care for dogs and cats.
I, I, I think we need to look at that, um, and I think you mentioned a couple of weeks ago. You know, when you gave them two hundred fifty thousand dollars last year, so. How is their income gotten any better this year?
They said they did get more donations, they reset the community more, but, you know, I, I don't see their books, and that's where some, I think, we need, we appreciate. Them giving us the property, absolutely, a hundred percent.
So are they utilizing all their space?
It's a big space in there.
So, so would it make sense for us to combine it?
Go hard.
Commissioners, go hard, um. When I came in, uh, they were offering, Animal Welfare was offering. To lease space in their back corner that wasn't finished yet. Um, it would be done in this corner here, but they wanted eighteen thousand dollars. Please.
Oh, we have to negotiate that?
Well, they tried, and if you negotiate that, then you guys will offer the R and P because it's more than standard for the year. On track, so then they came back later and said, well, we'll just donate you property. So I went out and I marked the space, you know, what I would think to be suitable for the dog pound fee, I marked spots on it. They looked at it and approved the three acres that we seek here, all the way to home. So, and there's the donation of the property, and that's how I came to be. They were, Michelle, and it's here, deciding to get this started, so we gave them. That's how it occurred, yeah, there is space here, they wanted substantial property.
That's what I'm saying, we need, we need to sit down with their, some of their board members, just say, hey, let's. Look at the finances, we want to make sure you're gonna be here ten years from now, we're moving next to you, and how do we, how do we make this work for all of us?
Great. Commissioners, that brings me back to when I was here three weeks ago, I gave you a change order. From the Water and Sewer Lines, which is a thirty two thousand, three hundred fifty one dollar change order. Uh, that's subtracted from the balance of the two hundred thousand donation. So that's what we have this gentleman here for a change order that occurred for the water and sewer line extension, I gave you that. We'd have to generate appeal to get this gentleman, his difference in the engineering costs.
I guess I would ask the question if investigation is going to be done, if you're gonna spend some time. We want to move our contract, basically, they didn't run ready to go and find, figure out what you're doing. Uh, at that point, if it, project picks back up or money picks up. Uh, we can move on there, because if Phil said, when this project grew, we based our price off of what's the art? And the building grew, and we added a sanitary and everything into it. Right now, what we have left on our contract, basically, the same amount is the change. We could close the contract out without asking for additional services, then if it's three months, six months, whatever. Project kiddo is all we would do is give you a, a proposal for basically a project. It's just a thought to avoid.
Jimmy Taylor, Western Reserve Building Trace, uh, just something to keep in mind, as you're investigating. Um, contracts usually do take a available place, then usually have it around the end of May, beginning June. So, as things go down the road, we get more expensive all the time. Comment, um, also, uh, with this, is there any direction on whether a P L A would give you any bid? Uh, steps whenever it goes out, and obviously, I'm not P L A, that's bringing jobs. So, just a, just a comment on there about that, I'm in County, did there be a dog pound, there a P L A?
Phil Hart, Tom County Maintenance, yeah, we'll add the P L A, could study some of our funding, our total funding budget, it's a, commissioners.
And just to explain too, on the federal funding. Um, as I was getting, mentioned, um. But just because it's federal funding, doesn't mean it can't be a project labor agreement, it's only on the state of Ohio for schools. The director of work from, uh, Asian. Uh, in my administration, anything over thirty five million dollars on a, a federal project, actually implemented deal.
One, one thing right here, I just wanna reiterate this only because it's out there on social media, that somehow that two hundred thousand disappeared. Talked about it here and there here, but that two hundred thousand was utilized for this. That's what this cost, somehow people have this idea that it's been frittered away, you have to have this before you can have. So, it's, it's important for people to understand, uh, that that's what that was utilized. Whether it goes forward now or it goes forward in the future, we have that, that's the.
Fine attention. First question, on your drawing on what? Which direction is north?
Which direction is north? Uh, so it's here, so, north is up on the side there, so.
So at the bottom. Okay, look, yeah. Which is what I thought it was, you've got open runs. Facing south, where we have neighbors south.
Yeah, I will tell you the distance and, and I know we spoke about this. These are only places that don't put a dog out, you cannot turn out, leave them out, these are exercise dogs, put them out here. Uh, I don't know what scale this is, but, okay, we've got more to come on feet before we even hit there, uh, wooded area in the back.
Are you aware of it? We have an agreement with the Animal Welfare League, and if you look at their building. Footprints for them, there are two runs on the south side of the building. Our agreement with them is they're not to be used after dark. And again, what I'm looking for here is some assurance, officials, still. That those dogs will be inside at night, because I know the situations that go on down the interstate where. Dogs are housed outside, can't have that, that's item one. Item two, are you going to comply with our zone light mitigation? Uh, again, we have the agreement with the, the earth, the yards, are, you know, John, when you said. That, that the lights have to be compliant. Um, we've actually spent. Oh, I'm guessing fifteen to twenty thousand dollars. Um, installing O V lights, down, getting rid of. The horse lights because of the way they produce their light. This is an area which they do fly over when they're using the southern runways. So we are a little concerned, we're gonna be compliant, to everybody be compliant. Those are the two major factors, jump right out.
I could answer the second, that had come up in form, and we did photo metrics of the entire site where the light are. We've also shielded all of our lights, even the neighbors, keep the light looking effective. Uh, you know, I can tell you, everything's O V D and it is going down, I think we've done as much as we can do. We, we can, we can go back to it at some point. Now, the, the other thing that's hurt the Animal Welfare League. Um, a neighbor actually had a fire, which was legal. Uh, the only problem is their air exchanger, in the Animal Welfare Building, replaces the air twice a day. Uh, what occurred is it's sudden, the smoke. If the fires are happening, everyone else out there. Uh, and we took care of the neighbor, or it's running burns and all. Uh, is there some type of air exchanger for this building that's gonna be? This building was, uh, engineering wise, we did a few things, and. Processed building, and I'll go back to your question about ten months, making it up, there's some things that. Very good reason they make a lot of sense, but it costs some money, for example, we have heated slabs for the dog. Dog or animal cold slab, we have kennels that are indoor out, so they, indoor. Door shots, but if they clean the sun, they can open up, let them out, those are easy, so if they have to go out, they're gonna keep the slab. So that's a good portion of our heating in the back area here, along with basically just electric heaters and motor heaters. Rest of our area, we have a furnace, it's basically heated from inside, it's not an air, it's not an air intake. Uh, we do a lot of exhausts, so there's always taking some air from the outside. But, like, we have the condition of what we do, so it's cool. I mean, the other agreement we have with the Animal Welfare is, others come. And they've been very, very good with us, that we have, um, all about ways to separate them instead of saving. Or it'll be something like that, if you thought. Yeah, I mean, some of that becomes an operational thing, we have every, this whole thing has a sanitary all set up. They catch everything that comes down to it, every cattle has its own drain, or takes it all in, if they're gonna fix these or whatever, I'm not sure operationally, they'll make you know. Other than I have dumpsters, I will do that.
Commissioners, Alex, Stephen Johnson-Bush, I just wanna, and we, I think this at least gives you an idea of what you're looking at. Building wise, and then as well as furnishings, however, the one thing that the architects fit and solve for is. Um, so what I can tell you is right now, we're at seven people, we have seven employees at the dog pound, currently. That's for seventeen kennels, I think what I'm hearing is forty, minus forty five kennels on here, or is it? It says forty five on.
Forty five.
Forty five, okay, so I'm seeing forty five, so if we have seven employees for seventeen kennels. You do the math, I mean, obviously, we can deduct that there's gonna need to be.
But there's also the possibility too of an increased volunteer workforce. Now, when they have better conditions, when they can handle the volunteers there, there's a whole slew of people that love to volunteer in situations like this.
I completely agree with that, but that, volunteers don't come and thank, you know, particularly sometimes they do come. And so there is one, at the end of the day, I would be lying to you if I said that there would be not any. With, um, you don't need to roughly estimate, depending on what employee is doing, uh, anywhere from eighty five to a hundred thousand per employee, with all benefits, grants benefits. Um, so just keep that in mind as well, um. That might, and I'd be more than happy to help cross that out for you, but I would. Probably say just generous, an additional two hundred fifty thousand to at least, uh, five hundred thousand, maybe twenty thousand. That has to be sustainable every single year, and contractors, and health insurance, right, but I make that all in, so. That's just off topic.
Situation in this county is, um, we're maxed out of what we can handle, and we have a nonprofit group that's got eighty five dogs, and I think if he wasn't there. It would be our responsibility also, so. It is what it is, with the man, I can just ignore fifty, sixty, seventy dogs, they need assistance, they need help. You know, we, uh. It's a cost to a business, you know, we, we need to work with the community too, to alleviate that number, alleviate. The dog breeding that goes on in the county and alleviate the poor irresponsible ownership we have in the county, it's gotta go along. With this whole big picture of things, we have a. Neglected animal problem in this county, and we would need Animal Welfare League, the Dog Pound, all these other charities to take care of.
Also, Commissioners, I just wanna make sure, I wanna go back to the volunteer aspect, we do have a contract, exactly, they want to volunteer, we have to. Alex, Stephen Johnson-Bush, we need resources to, to cover us with all liability, but I do need everybody to also understand that that contract is limited to what they can and can't do, again. There are certain things that, that the volunteers cannot do, dogs, that we need actual employees, that's what they do that, they do, you know, additional work. The volunteers aren't coming in and cleaning the kennels by any means, I mean, that is our employees, the volunteers aren't, you know, training, well, they, they do have to train, but they block them, they, they visit them. Volunteers are extremely important, I bet you we wouldn't even be making it today without them, to your point, but I just wanna make sure you understand, the volunteers won't get you guys. Besides them, you are going to need them, so whether it be one, two, three, four, that's up to you guys, but it will be costly, just need to make into the total picture, so I'm asking.
Do you want to set a meeting up with Dan Wolfher League as chairman, edit this program, see if you can meet with their board, and we're back to us on?
I think we all should be, I, I don't think we should put it on.
That's called a special meeting.
Well, it's a big project, I saw the project, Commissioners are available, but I can't make a connection.
I will tell you, they're, they're, we sat down.
And, and, you know, I, I think it's crucial, we do move forward with this meeting. To discuss with them, but I can caution you, you know, we're looking at Animal Welfare League, you know, for them to say, oh yeah, we'd feel comfortable ten years out. I mean, who knows what could happen.
Well, they are nonprofit, everything is certainly all public.
Right.
And then we're.
I mean, they may give us.
Two, five, ten year plans up for being there somewhere.
But, um. You know, we, we're gonna have to look at a way for all these projects and fund these projects, that's number one, we gotta, we're gonna have to free up money, whether it be. You know, a loan for these buildings, whether it be, you know, some sort of a, an increase in something. I will mention what I feel the increase would need to be at this point in time, but I, I. Commissioner, you said it well, we're kicking a can down the road for years, at some point in time, these services that the people want. That they need, that, you know, nine one one, this dog pound. And I know Tacy's here, and I know Tacy, you know, we're, we're looking at that too, I mean, we're, we're very. And I know Tacey Sharon, I know Tacey, you know, we're, we're looking at that too. I mean, we're, we're very, you know, adamant about putting that together, but. You know, these are three major. Buildings that we have to really consider putting together. And, you know, to look at AWL and say, well, I don't know if they're gonna be there in ten years or, you know. Who knows? We don't know if we're gonna be here in a year or two. But we really gotta, really gotta, once we get through these budget talks, put our heads together, figure out how are we gonna finance these efforts? What are we gonna do?
We, I, I think we need to lead through this and.
Wanna be responsible about it.
In Wayne County, I was giving an example, Wayne County, they wanted a bigger ag building in Fairbanks. They went huge. They went mega big and said, we need this. It's five and a half million dollar building. They built it. They financed it over fifteen years. They reached out to the community, the farming community, their citizens. When they saw how well that building was being utilized, when they built trust between county government and the public. They paid that building off in five years on a fifteen year mortgage. And they paid it off in five years and fifty percent of it was from private contributions. From their people that supported what the government was doing for them and they saw the value in it. I think people are gonna see a value in a dog pound. They're gonna see a value in some of these other, other projects that we have. As we build trust, we're doing the right thing. We're not frivolously wasting money, especially in this sector here. When it comes to the farmers, when it comes to the dog lovers, they are gonna step forward for projects like this if they trust what we're doing. And, and I. I, um. I'm gonna trust them back and I'm gonna trust the public back that they're gonna be there with us.
But, but I have, I have to throw this out there. I just can't keep quiet. Had county had thirty-eight million dollars. None of that went for three projects.
Which, what money out of the thirty million would you not have spent?
Well, you know what?
It's easy to criticize three years worth of.
I think, I think that goes back to, you have to say what's important. You know, is, is building a pickleball court important? Is it, uh, paving the parking lot important? So buying, you know, um, I, I, I kinda wanna say it. It's gonna get me in trouble, but Gerard finished last year with three million dollars. Um, in excess on their budget and, and the county bought them, uh, uh. An influence, you know, I mean, you know, we have to look out for ourselves in our, in the taxpayers, okay? And with all accounts, very, nine-one-one's very. And so is the coroner's office. I mean. Commissioner, you had to make hard decisions, but none of it went for these projects. And now, now we're saying we're gonna put it on the taxpayer.
None of them went for these projects. Nine hundred thousand went to new sheriff's vehicles. Some people say that wasn't right. We had money that went to sewer infrastructure, about twelve million dollars, I believe, close to a sewer infrastructure. Every township in the county got up to three hundred thousand dollars. We let them decide what was most important. The, the trustees, their residents decide what was most important. I agree. It, we could have taken care of all this, but we can't backseat quarterback decisions that were made at that time where I, I don't see. Pardon me?
If, if asked, we didn't bring up money for those.
Absolutely. That was discussed. Absolutely. We talked about this. Ten, pardon me?
They didn't vote on it.
No, it was something that wasn't in the stage yet of doing that. We had ten million left and there were many other requests. I still have a stack this big of. What do we have? Uh, under forty-some requests that we didn't fulfill?
You're always.
And they're all great programs. I can't say that none of them are bad programs.
Yeah, they're all great.
Your United Way is important.
But we're facing, you know, you're asking me to raise taxes to pay for these three programs.
We're not asking to raise taxes anymore. No one's snuttered, let's raise taxes.
That's something that we have to discuss to find, find a way to do these things. I know, you know, this, this has been talked about forever. Nine-one-one, uh, you know, we got the corner working out of the garage. These services need to be offered to the residents. I think the residents would have to understand at some point in time. If you want these types of services, which are very crucial and important. They got, the, the money gotta come from some, so.
We could fight.
We're gonna have to figure that out.
Fight for the community or we can fight against it. We, we're fighting and I believe, I, that's good that we're fighting for something right now instead of fighting against something.
I agree.
Fighting for is always better than fighting against.
Right.
But we do have to say, why was the new dog pound done ten years ago? Why wasn't it done twelve years ago? The coroner's been in that building at the board of elections for many years. Why didn't we have a new coroner? That's why were they, working the conditions they worked in in the hospital that were deplorable? Why is nine-one-one been in a basement for twenty-five years, twenty-eight years? Uh, close to twenty-eight years in an old morgue and no one did anything about it. That place flooded out. And they worked in a trailer for a year and a half and they rebuilt in the same morgue with no windows instead of expanding. Twenty years ago, why didn't the commissioners get them a new place? We're dealing with, again, I say it, sins of our fathers. It sends the people before us. All we can do now is lead better and, and we, we can criticize all we want. I just ask, let's fight for something instead of fighting against.
I'm agreeing. And I agree, but he said the question is that I'm getting.
So am I.
You know, you wanna raise my taxes, then they had my.
Potentially.
And how do I answer that? You know, especially when they're, you know, their utility rates are going up, their medical bills are going up, you know, their property taxes. You know, a person on fixed income, they can't afford all this. That's, that's just.
That's, that's the plight of America right now. The people that have retail stores, they're losing Amazon every day. Are they gonna figure a way around it to make money? They gotta figure, I don't make ends meet with less. We gotta grow our economy here in this county. We gotta work together to cut waste, get rid of government waste. The more we cut, the more we have to spend on. Projects like this, the, the more fat we get rid of, uh, when it comes to government waste. And I think we're working to do that. So I, let's, I think let's move more forward possibly together and figure it out.
Mr. Snyder here very long, but I appreciate you. You know, explaining this, we will feel, uh, what you've done, beautiful building. I hope at some point in time that we can do something, you know, to make this become fruition. Um.
But, but I agree with you, Commissioner. Respectfully, I agree. We're taxed off in this county and it's the state, the feds. I mean, I look at our own paycheck, you know, I'm disgusted. We got our W nines now. Look how much money the feds are taking from us and where's that money going? Where did that money go? What do we see on TV where our money, where our money goes? I don't agree with all of it, but I can't change that. I can only change what I can change and what we can deal with at hand.
I, and I agree with you. You know, we have to stop government waste. I haven't seen us start to do that yet. You know, we need to focus on that. Where can we cut? How, how can we cut? You know, the average, uh, uh, person on social security. I, I looked it up the other day. They're, they're only getting nineteen thousand dollars a year. It's poverty, I mean. But that's what you're getting. That's what, you know, look it up. You know, you just can't keep adding it. I mean, they don't have it. You know, you try to win nineteen thousand.
I, I agree. Scares the hell out of me too. We, we can't change that in this board.
Well, 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 we have to cut where we can cut and then we'll go from there.
Tacey, did you have something?
Yeah, um, I, Tacey McDonald, nine-one-one director, um, I stopped in. Cause I thought we had an agenda item for our new employee. Alex is, I think, gonna try to add that. It just got, uh, missed the deadline apparently. Um, so I just wanna speak a little context of, I know you're talking about nine-one-one building and the other buildings. That one's gorgeous, by the way. Uh, very jealous, just looking at the pictures on it. Uh, but just real quick, I know there's some misinformation about funding at the state level for nine-one-one and next gen with what Divine rolled out a couple of weeks ago or the other day. Um, just wanted to give you an update. There is not any local funding for us for nine-one-one. The only thing they will cover is our last mile connectivity to the new state nine-one-one program. So what that means is let's say we stay at our amazing building that we have right now. You're gonna connect that last mile connectivity. So basically internet. You know, connectivity to, you know, uh, Lumen, whoever that would be, to the state's closest ORNET POP, which ORNET is their big network. Uh, for layman's terms. They would help pay for that last mile connectivity. So whatever the cost would be of installing that. They won't pay any recurring costs. So say your internet bill for, for easy terms. They won't pay your, your connectivity bill, but they will pay to help bring that last mile connectivity from us to them. There's no point in us doing that if we're looking at a new building. You're wasting money. For them to connect to the current place we're at if we're looking to move into a building. If anything, it, it urges us even more to push it along to get that new building. Because the sooner we get in a new building, the sooner we can get connected to the state's new next-gen nine-one-one infrastructure. That's where all Divine's money and his budget went to was the infrastructure of building that backbone so you can have that interconnectivity. Which helps with routing nine-one-one calls, so you're not getting nine-one-one transfers and all those things. The only money that we actually see is they raised the twenty-five cent cell phone device fee to the seventy cents, but we get a percentage of that. Which essentially is twenty-eight cents. So it went from twenty-five cents to twenty-eight cents. That three whopping extra cents brings in about a hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars was the increase that we got this year. That won't even pay for new servers. So I know there was questions like, why aren't we going gung ho for this? Um, I know I use kind of a, a generic analogy, but if you have the state system, which is the Maserati, we're not gonna go put our Chevy or Ford Pinto motor in it. You know what I mean? And that's, our, our current place is our, is a Ford Pinto. It's junk. Um, your sixteen-year-old would be embarrassed to drive it around. So. That's kinda what I'm saying is, is for us to move forward, we have to fix all the things that. Like you said, it's been kicked down the road for so many years and that's just equipment, technology, all the things that have been neglected. There's been no maintenance done. Our servers are over eight years old. That's unheard of. If, if Tim was here, he'd be like, yeah, you replace them every five, six years. Especially for something like critical infrastructures like nine-one-one. I'm currently getting quotes from our vendor to see if we can afford it in our budget that we already have and money we have left from last year to get new servers. So that way, if we get a new building, we can just take those servers with us. We bought forty-five thousand dollars worth of new, uh, computers and monitors for last, uh, this, at the end of last year with money that we had saved. I'm installing those myself over there. I've had some help with Lex, from Lexi with I, IT. We're getting those going. Um, as we can add them and those are also something that we can take to the new center and they should be good for, you know, three to four years for those items. So we're trying to do, we're trying to update our, um, our event time recorder. I'm getting quotes for that as well. So I'm trying to do things within our budget to improve some technology. So then when we do move. We can just move and get the furnishings and whatnot. The problem for me is I can't get to the point where you guys are with the dog worms thing until we have a not to exceed X amount of dollars. And I know you guys are working on that, so I'm not trying to push that. Uh, but basically I need to say, hey, Tacey, you know, not to exceed four million dollars, not to exceed three million dollars. Then we'll know if we're, you know, champagne taste on a beer budget, what we're gonna be able to try to pull off if we can move forward with that building. And like, like you said, you know, the three buildings need to be done. Nine-on-one obviously is passionate of mine because you're talking about people, you know, and, and dogs are great. I have a dog. He spoiled rotten, cost me a fortune, but. You know, people are the, the biggest thing and, and no matter who you call, nine-one-one touches every single person in this county. Um, obviously I have an issue with the state because they don't fund it. They could have raised that twenty-five cents. They could have made it two dollars. Michigan's like three dollars per cell phone. You know, you're not gonna notice if your cell phone bill goes up three bucks because we're already paying through the nose for our cell phone. Most of us have five, six, seven, eight, nine lines. Um. But unfortunately they haven't done that and I, I know that's why I know we lobbied for them to raise that amount. The raise that they did do that, that whopping three for three cents, it's only good for a year. Next fall, they're gonna revisit it and see if they're gonna extend it again.
So who sets the rates? The state legislature?
That's the state legislature, yeah. And the nine-one-one, um, members across the state. Um, previously before I got hired here, we were meeting regularly to try to push for lobbyists to raise that. Like I said, other states, you can even do it like per county. Some counties, you have to do the special assessments and you have to do multiple ratings and whatever. There's various ways where you can set one locally. Um. But at, at the various state levels, other states are, are way more than what we are. I mean, Ohio's twenty-five cents, even if you took it to say two dollars and fifty cents. We would bring in four million dollars a year. If they took it to two dollars and fifty cents per cell phone. If I had four million dollars a year, we wouldn't be talking about this right now. I would just need my money from you guys to pay our wages and if we take that four million dollars, we'd be able to do a new building. And then we'd be able to stay up to date with technology. I mean, there's a lot of agents right now that have text to nine-one-one and all these other features we can't even do because. Our networking, everything is just so, it's thirty years piled into an old building that's been redone. And then as it's been done, they put old, new stuff in and they don't take the old stuff out. This last week when I was installing new computers, I crawled on my hands and knees over the desk. I came out looking like a homeless person. I was covered in dirt. I pulled out seven or eight cables that were to nothing. Because previous vendors, when they came in and put new stuff in, they left the old stuff in there. So you can't find your elbow from, you know, the same. So, um, basically what we need to do is a new building would give us a clean slate to have that network set up perfectly. Have the cabling ran, have it all run professionally to where you're set up for the future. So when you add positions or devices, it's all networked together. Right now, if you pull off the back panels to our nets, you'll find five or six, um. Extension. Uh, probably bill. Uh, the plugs. You're gonna find five or six power strips in behind a computer. That's not safe for that much technology and equipment to be plugged into. And then you gotta hope that it's plugged into a separate battery backup. So when we lose power every generator test, that you're not losing this monitor and this monitor. You're running six monitors. So that's the kind of stuff we're dealing with. It's not just, oh, we want a new building. We need a new building. We need new technology. And I get that it costs money and I, I hate being here asking for more money, but. That's where we're at. And until the government steps up and says, hey, we're gonna fund nine-one-one at the state level. We're gonna make these nine-one-one fees more expensive on the cell phones, which is, who's putting the burden on the system? It's all the people who call nine-one-one from your cell phone. Most people nowadays don't have landlines. You know, maybe people have small kids do. I know I did when I had little kids, you know. But that's kinda where we're at. So. This whole misnomer that the state's giving us money and that there's gonna be all this money, they're not. We got an extra hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars last year. And like I said, if I'm lucky, that will cover our servers.
Um, Alex, Stephen Johnson, Bush, you can resource us to cover it. One thing that concerns me is I was looking through the next gen specifically what was released this week. Um, is there was a simple statement on the bottom that kind of said, well, not kind of, it, it said. If this will be forced on everybody from twenty twenty-five in the state. So essentially that then kind of made me a little bit concerned thinking. In the spring, if this is going to be, you know, mandated by the state, if we tap into this next-gen system. And we're still in the old building from spring.
We have five years. So once the state system just went live, they went live with the pilot program. I think it's ten counties that are tied into it right now. The second thing is number two, even if we had a brand-new building right now, we were already in it, ready to go. I wouldn't sign up for the state thing for about another eight, nine pennies. I hate to be an early adopter of things, especially anything at the state, because it's like buying that brand-new car, the first model year. We all know they're junk. Takes that first year to find, find out what's wrong with them. Look at the Ford Bronco back in the day. You know what I mean? The first year it was junk. Second year, they worked the bugs out. Same way with the state program. Nothing to say that it's not doing good. Like I've heard good things so far. But I would never wanna jump on at the beginning because then you have, okay, it's, it's just like when we get a cat update. When they do an update, they fix two things, but they break six. That's just how technology is. So I would be wanting to say, hey, at the end of the year, let's jump on if we're already in a new building. That being said, if we get into a new building, if you sign paperwork tomorrow saying, yes, Tacey, full charge, we're going, you got this much money, we're gonna do it. I would say optimistic goal would be to be within a building within eighteen months to two years. By that time, the state should have all their bugs worked out. We could say, you know what, while we're building the building, we have that last month connectivity ready to go. So we're good to go there and then we just plug into it at that time. So if, once it's launched completely, it offer them, like once the pilot's done and it's available, she says spring of twenty-five is what they're thinking. You have five years to adopt. So we have five years to actually meet that mandate. Uh, additionally, the one thing I did talk to the state this morning, cause I wanted to make sure I had my facts for you guys as far as on the funding. He said, he goes, it'd be done for you to do the pop connection if you're ready, if you're staying in that building, you know, unless, unless you're staying there, staying there. If you're gonna move to a new building, he's like, it doesn't make sense to do that. He goes, because. Even if we had, say, the new building, he says, if you know you're gonna move to a new building in, say, here. Because if you do that last month connectivity now, you're gonna be getting bills for that last month connectivity before you're even connected to it. So there's no point. We basically aren't ready for that. We aren't ready to connect. So that's kind of where I wanted to kinda give you that in a nutshell, just explain that there's not funding out there like we had hoped. Originally I'd heard that there was gonna be a, a round of grants coming out in that second year of funding. And no, it's not. What they did is they increased that fee, so we're getting about an extra hundred and seventy-three thousand a year.
Well, I, I get a really, really too, Commissioners. We need a dog pound, we need a nine-one-one, we need a corner. We talk about this every week. We talk about this every week for a year. Prices on these things aren't gonna get any cheaper. We're not gonna find a treasure chest somewhere in Chumpel County to make all our dreams come true. We need to start saying, all right, if we have a free building, we put nine-one-one in, we know it's gonna cost us. What the rate is now to move in there, let's get them there. Let's see what we can do to get them there. We know that we need a dog pound, let's move in that direction. We know a corner, it's kind of open dead bodies in a garage with summer coming up. With no air conditioning in that garage by July, let's do what we can to do, make this happen now. We have an idea, a plan there, we can move EMA to a building that we already own. And not have to build a new building and just retool two buildings. We know that's cheaper to building a new building. We've talked about with the architect. Uh, this, the same gentleman did plans for us on Chestnut Street, over two million dollars to retool that one building. We could do it for a lot less where we are at EMA. So we're, we're sitting here wishing we had more money and, and debating stuff when it's not. debating stuff when it's not gonna get any cheaper. We know this has to be done. Let's do it. I mean, if we gotta do bonds, if we gotta move forward, I don't, I don't wanna say go broke. I don't wanna say bankrupt the farm or sell the farm or, or mortgage the farm. But we've gotta move forward on this stuff because we've got Tacey here now, ready to go. We got the dog ward ready to go. We gotta go hard here now. Leaving soon, that's, that's been knee-deep in this stuff or waist-deep. And we got a corner every day that we risk losing our forensic pathologists because it was working additions. Then all of a sudden, we're sending bodies to Cleveland, paying out the ass with money we don't have. Um, we have to start looking at solutions to this and just pull, be smart enough to pull the trigger.
Now, and I agree with it, and I, Commissioner Bernard, and I, and I understand his feelings. Cause I'm, you and I are here in the same time. But we do need to really pay attention to these, these services that we have to offer the public. Uh, it, you know, it, this has been talked about forever. At some point in time, we gotta make that move. We gotta, we gotta make that move that we don't wanna have to make, but there's no other way to do it unless we, we do make that move. So I hope that we could come together. I will contact AWL. I guess we're gonna work with, uh, the, um, uh, in Portland on the nine-one-one, correct?
So our, our, our next steps, uh, for us to, we have, we have, uh, I quotes went out for consultants to do the actual assist with the architect and all those things. So for us, next steps, I think for me to be able to move forward would be, hey, we have, you know, not to exceed this much money. That way we can get going. Uh, our quotes are coming back on Valentine's Day from the consultants. Uh, we can do an extension with our, um, architect and add on to our existing contract. Uh, I would have to take it to the nine-one-one board to get their blessing to move to Portland, um, Bank Building. That's the one that gave back a feasibility study is the best location for us. Um, that's.
I mean, there's a transmission out of the, uh, the lot, if the transmission's good, if we do it at the fairgrounds, you could loop that.
Yeah, if, if you guys, if you guys end up putting a tower up at the fairgrounds, that, that is a feasible option for us, cause it's only about five miles. That is like.
Tacey, we're, Alex and Jesse Bush, what if we don't? Does that have to be there before? Or can you, can you expound on that?
No, so we can, um, we, we would have to just, we could, we would have to do probably a, um, microwave pop from a water tower, which would be a, a cheap solution in the interim, or we could do, work with one of our providers and do a connectivity.
And it's feasible.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, that's doable.
Yeah, we know the tower is gonna bring us in income. I mean, I, there's, so there's four things kind of. Honestly, we gotta put our head down, just charge forward and get the stuff done. It's gonna cost us more next year. We're gonna be debating the same thing at higher rates next year. Like you said, we're not gonna have a windfall of money coming.
So if, if we can get to the point where we can move forward with the consultants and the architect, then we could start doing those things. I can sit down with them and we can come back and give you an ideal cost like what he has done for the dog worms office. Because they're the ones that are gonna sit down, they're the ones that are gonna provide the bid specs and all, and all of that for the equipment. I know, we went and looked at Summit, their new nine-one-one center. I think they've been in it for four years. Twelve-million-dollar building. It's thirty thousand square feet. It's insane. But what we did is we looked at their furniture, furniture desk for a dispatch. One position is twenty-five thousand dollars. That's how much for one basket. We need ten. At least ten, probably not like twelve.
But they are accustomed to the, they're accustomed to what you guys do. I mean, that's important to note for, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're, that's what is needed in the field. It's not just, oh, you know, I, I got myself a, you know, an Ikea desk and I'm gonna try to make it work. That's, you know, these are the things that you need in the field. But that just gives you an idea of what kind of cost we're looking at, just in that side of things. Um, servers, you know, networking, all, all of those things. So, but, but once I get the, go ahead to kind of get the consultants to do that, I can come back and say, hey, they said it's gonna be X amount of dollars with construction, or at least we can ballpark it.
That's a twenty-five-year-old problem there that never should have been done in the first place in the building that they're in, but that's here and there again. Um.
Uh, Commissioner, can I ask you a question?
We, we need to work with our state reps too, because this is something they've asked us, where, where our wish list is. We're debating this stuff. We need to be sitting down with Dave Thomas and Sandy O'Brien and Nick Santucci and saying, we need money for a dog pup, we need money for a corner, we need money for nine-one-one. Let them go to work and see what they can do to help get us some assistance in this.
Yeah, my name's Jim Bell. This is the first time I've been into a meeting. This is interesting. But a couple of things I found out just here. Does the county have a good grant writer? I've got an nephew. She's done a lot of stuff for her school district. Another one, do you have a grant writer?
We're in the process, if I can interrupt you, we're in the process of looking at that into, um, to go along with, uh, what Commissioner Loy said. Uh, we're in a process of setting up a meeting with, uh, two state reps, our state senator, um, having them come in and talk to us. And part of it is, is on, um, uh, grant writing and, and seeing which direction we wanna go. Uh, that's in the process. We just need to, we just need to get their schedule with our schedule. Then they're gonna let us know, and then they're gonna come in. There's a lot of things that we're gonna discuss with, with our state reps and state senator. That, that's, that's one of them. That's one thing that, uh, that I, I think we need to look at is grant writing. And they're gonna tell us, we need a list of what's important to us so they can help us get this. Okay? Um, I rattled off three or four items, uh, to them a couple of weeks ago, and they said, well, at least, at least you have a list before they can even handle this one. Can't just ask them for ten million dollars. They're not gonna give. You have to tell them what, what you need it for. So we're in the process, hopefully by the, um, early part of February, we're gonna have, they're gonna come in here. We're gonna sit down with them, and we're all. No, you probably, but I agree. The work is mine. Right, I agree. And they're gonna bring, you know, we're gonna see, do we do a consultant? Do we grant, do we grant writer, or do we do a little bit of both? You know, but we're not at that point yet. But we're trying to get to that.
Well, we are missing money. When Portland could get a two-point-one-billion-dollar grant for a safety center, and we had a nine-one-one center that we're paid for, we missed the boat on that one with our state senator and our state reps. I would think that's more important than, Portland has that, can't even afford the policemen they have there right now. They got that. Wish them luck on that stuff, but there, there's money out there apparently that we're missing that we should, we should have been on top of.
We, we have, we have definitely discussed that.
Yeah, this is my, my area. I was just amazed with what she's done with people she works with. The other thing, I don't know if it's gonna mean much. I just mailed my thing for my gas. Four-point-six-nine, second year in a row for that. I don't know if that would help you buy it out, but it goes that route. Company I go out, the Wizards, uh, out of Alabama, utility gas and power. And, uh, all I did told, look, I've been with you guys for five or six years. And if she come back, she dropped a few dollars. So I don't know if that would help. Look them up. Don't know that. And then one more thing that I'll shut up and get out of your hair here. This isn't gonna cost you guys any more money. Now, I was locked in with you. I used to be, for a few years, I was in, uh, grounds maintenance. And then I, I retired from Ajax, uh, building production heat, whatever, forty-eight years. But anyway, when you walk up the steps and you see all the, who takes care of your trash cans at the courthouse and here? Is it county or city? Cause it looks like hell, and that's a cheap thing to take care of. Not to, so it doesn't, and the structure's starting to trouble. That's gonna wind up being a lawsuit in a matter of time. I know that's gonna cost money, but I don't want you guys to get sued. But the trash cans do look like hell, and they're always like that. I don't like my county looking like that. But you guys got a lot of other stuff going on. So I'm not gonna come in here and pour crap on you. I'm just gonna sort of enlighten you what's going on. So, but the big thing is on that grant thing, that was, uh, telling you, big help. I agree. I'm gonna shut up.
The trash cans will be taken care of immediately.
That's city, chief.
Yes, ma'am.
That's a city.
City.
Oh, yes, city.
Hi, I'm Robin Rollins. Um, I have, was with the senior advisory council. And I was elected to be in June to felt replace somebody. And was supposed to know by the end of December cause I re- applied for that position that I was in. But I was told there was, or the commissioners need more information. I was wondering what kind of more information can I give you so that I can?
Well, the last meeting we had, there were reappointment names and none of us knew who. So they, I'm sure over the last week, I asked my colleagues to look at the resumes, look at the letters that we have on file to familiarize themselves so we can make a decision on.
Well, hey, I'm here. I really wanna continue doing this for our county. I really wanna fight for our seniors. I'm one of those people that, and I understand where they're at and wanna help. So just put that out there so I can get out of your hair. I don't wanna take five hours, and I'm volunteered for this. So this is all free. It's easy to do. Free. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for attending.
Is she talking about?
The reappointments on the senior levy service.
Mr. Kelly and Mr. Peterson.
No, there's three seats open. There's two reappointments, and now Mr. Barkley just resigned. So Mr., um, uh, Chickalo and Mr. Peterson, they both represent the same interest. When they heard there was one seat open that was not a reappointment, they were gonna work it out amongst themselves and get back with us by tomorrow on which one, instead of both of them. They said they would do one of those seats and, and lobby for one of them to get the third seat that was there. But her seat is a reappointment, and Ms. Scott's seat, I believe, is a reappointment. They both come recommended from some board members or last week.
There should be two reappointments and one new.
Correct. The one new was just a resignation yesterday. That'll be the one that, that, when we were reached out to by Mr. Peterson and Mr. Chick, uh, Chickalo, that that was that one.
I know both.
Yeah, and they're, they're both great guys. And that's why I said, hey, when, when Mr. Peterson heard Mr. Chickalo put in, he said, give it to Jim. Jim, you know, Jim's, I just wanna help if you need help. And then Jim was gonna, I said, well, you two talk amongst each other then, and, uh, make a consensus, so.
Okay, Commissioners, we got a really.
We, we don't, we don't.
Do we have CCAO here or?
They are there, but let them observe their thing. Let's do our thing, and then we'll get to them at the end.
They're there. Okay, cause I didn't wanna hide.
We're watching every move we make.
Okay. And they're probably thinking, boy, what a long meeting this is. Um.
They've watched for two years. They, four years. They know what's going on. They, they're smiling.
They've seen work. Uh, we're gonna move to agenda item four. Doubt the resolution approving submitted label to RRC five-seven-oh-five-four-one-D. Uh, summer of four purchasers, various vendors, then and now purchasers, clients, five-oh-seven, five-seven-oh-five-four-one-D. Five.
I wanna explain this to you because you guys have not done this yet. Uh, right here, twenty twenty, I'm gonna have Chrissy give you a background on this and why we're doing these uh, so you understand. So you've done that with the previous board, and you want to understand that. After Chrissy's done, she also has a question for the board, something that we would like to address that, and I would, don't wanna keep her.
So you'll be seeing these, uh, items monthly? Oh, sorry, Chrissy's the Sarah auditor's office. Uh, these are, uh, monthly items that we put onto the agenda. And basically, our high revised code fifty-seven-oh-five-four-one-D states that no orders or contracts involving the expenditure money are to be made unless there is a certificate by the fiscal officer that the amount required for the order of contract is unlawfully appropriated and is in the treasury or in the process of collection to the credit of an appropriate fund free from any previous encumbrances. So basically, expense is not to be encumbered prior to entering into a liability. The county's external auditors test this by comparing the purchase order date to the invoice date on, um, the expenses that they choose for their sample. The county has had some issues with this requirement for the past few years. I've included a page in the most recent management letter with the non-compliance citation. So I did have a little packet for you guys with the, the summer's list and the management letter from the last one. Um, since approximately mid-two thousand twenty-three, the auditor's office has been working with departments by educating them, encouraging them to keep track of annual recurring expenses and entering them earlier in the year, and then using blanket purchase orders for recurring month expenses. We've made progress, but it is an ongoing process. Uh, the statute does provide the following exception, a then-and-now certificate. This exception provides that if the fiscal officer can certify that both at the time that the contract or order was made, and at the time that he or she is completing the certification, sufficient funds were available or in the process of collection to the credit of a proper fund, properly appropriated and free from any previous encumbrance, the taxing authority can authorize the drawing of a warrant. Um, so amounts of less than a hundred dollars for counties may be paid by the fiscal officer without such affirmation of the taxing authority upon completion of the then-and-now certificate, provided that the expenditure is otherwise lawful. So when our accounts payable department reviews and approves invoices for, um, payments, they watch for it and make notes of non-compliance. And then each month, we run two, what we're calling then-and-now reports. Uh, one is invoices less than a hundred dollars, which are submitted to Auditor Yoder for a review and approval. And then invoices of more than a hundred dollars, which are submitted to the commissioners for review and approval. Our listing used to be very long. We're now at like, I think, uh, three and a half pages, the departments. And like I said, we're trying to, uh, each month identify the ones that are maybe like the, um, biggest producers of the then-and-nows and reach out to them and see if we can provide more help.
So just to remark to you, just to kind of briefly, uh, review this for you guys. If you have, uh, you have to have a purchase order, has to be prior to the invoice. So if we have those out of order, we have to do the then-and-nows. Now, there are times when you're going to have things that are out of order, when you have emergency situations. Um, you have something go wrong over the weekend with agents, and it's gotta get taken care of. Uh, we've had some of this stuff happen, even with IT, where we've had to repair something, and we'll have to, you know, take care of it in the moment. The then-and-now should be the exception, not the rule. The then-and-now is permissible, but it should always be our last resort. We've been working towards that for the last two years to get people to comply. We've gotten more compliance as time has gone by. We've had to reteach things, and we've tried to make it really clear. We wanted you guys to understand, you'll be getting these on the agenda once a month. You'll get the then-and-now. So you'll get the list. You guys will have to do it. We say then-and-now. Say that's, the money was there then, it's there now. That's what then-and-now means. We're certified. However, we wanna keep moving and getting this down and what I would say for any of these, I'd like it, it should be listed. It really should. This should be the exception, not the norm. We only have so much enforcement power on it. We can just, we just keep doing the best that we can. And just so that you guys understand, this compliance comes up in, in this, this note on the management letter, as long as it's on that management letter, that's gonna keep coming up when we deal with things like, oh, map for our borrowing. That's a question that the treasurer's office asks about. They wanna know that we're making progress towards the management letter. So it's really important that we keep doing this. But I wanted you guys to understand that we give a very thorough explanation of it, uh, for the other board when we started working on this two years ago. But we wanted you guys to understand exactly what it is. The other part, go ahead. Do you have questions about this specifically?
Well, it's a little confusing to me. I don't know, Commissioner, you understand?
And that's why I tried to, I guess she put a lot of words there, and I tried to.
I'm sorry.
And I appreciate it.
But you understand.
Here's a reimbursement, for example. Like, someone goes, like, uh, on a trip, a county employee, they come back and they give you the receipt. So they didn't get approved for how much they were gonna spend, but now they're turning the receipts in, and it's money that wasn't appropriated then, but you were paying them back now for it, so they didn't know in advance.
Like what happened with the last.
Every, every, every single penny that is spent in this county has to have a purchase order.
Yes, correct.
The purchase order encumbered that money. It's a plan that we're gonna spend that money on this. For instance, I have, um, I, I go to, uh, I go to conference, right, and I have my hotel cost for that conference. Well, it's in my budget, right? That's my plan for it. But when I know how much it's gonna cost, when I get the information from the hotel, go ahead.
Even if you don't know how much it's going to cost, because that is the problem.
And when I know, when I know about, I clarify, when I know about how much it's gonna cost, I look at, I look and I see the hotel where we have the conference and where I need to make a reservation is two-fifty a night. I go, I'm gonna be there three nights. We better do a PO for eight hundred dollars, right? I make sure that my clerk, who handles that, it's usually Chrissy or my, now my administrative assistant, make sure that we have a PO. If I don't have a PO for that, we have to turn back around and do a then-and-now. I have to certify as fiscal officer that we had the money then, we have the money. That is not the proper way for it to be done. The proper way, according to the, according to all of our rules, is that you have to have that purchase order first. And then you have, then you get the invoice, and you go out and get the bill. And that's where we've had to educate our staff, we've had to educate them, things like utilities. That should be a blanket purchase order at the beginning of the year. Go back, you know, your utilities are gonna cost X amount. You use that estimate, you make a purchase order for those utilities so that we're not having, uh, this, uh, arrangement.
What we heard a lot when we went to the departments was, boy, I couldn't do a purchase order, and so I got the invoice because I didn't know how much it's going to be.
You want to mention.
Yes, we need to enter into, or we need to do the purchase order before the invoice arrives, before that liability's entered into. We go out to Staples, we price that, kind of what we. We go out to Staples, we price that kind of what we need, but we do a purchase order before we actually commit to Staples.
Yeah.
You know, if we don't, we're in noncompliance.
At least you know all part figure what things are gonna be.
There's big, there's big war pairs, things like that, too. They give you the estimate you need to fix immediately. They're not gonna have time to send in the purchase orders and wait.
Well, that's what then and now is supposed to be. When you have an emergency situation or an in an urgent situation, that's what the then and now should be covered. It should not be for things like my travel. It should not be for things like um a utility bill. We know those expenses are coming.
We have big departments that were not uh pre-encumbering their recurring monthly bills. It was a lot. I do know we have one department that has really worked on this and they actually don't reimburse employees if they don't get the uh purchase order ahead of time. Their employees don't have a person, so.
That would make them definitely any of.
You will not see, you will not see that. Are there further questions on this agenda item? If not, I'm gonna have Christie go ahead and do the form with the question that has arisen in our office that we need the Commissioners to.
So this morning, um I was looking at the request for over budget because right now we have a lot of over budget requests because we're in temporary mode and not everything is um spent quarterly. You know, there are some payments that are just at the beginning of the year. Also, again, with this um then and now issue, we have been encouraging departments to do purchase orders or blanket purchase orders earlier in the year so that we don't have these issues. Um two of them came uh to my attention for the Fair Board. Uh one was for six thousand dollars for a grate and the other was ten thousand five hundred dollars for electricity. The one that came to my attention was a maintenance account and we had just talked to Shara um had previously in like about the utility uh. Chads. Chads, thank you, um about putting those into the Fair Board um division because we have accounts that are account for the Fair Board activity and that way we can track that.
Just to clarify, those are accounts are still under maintenance?
No, they're under Commissioners.
Under the Commissioners, okay, yes. So they're they're still under the Commissioners, but they are not out of maintenance itself.
No, yeah, so the Fair Board would be like Division ten eighteen, maintenance is ten thirty. So that's how we kind of track all of that stuff. So I called Shara and she was not aware of these and um we had talked about the uh utility shed too. So we just kind of went to see what we're supposed to be doing with this because it's in a budget of money. Um I I don't want to approve the over budget and then come back and say, well, you approved the purchase. There's no other approval on here. Do you understand? Like, just wanna know how this should go, how we should deal with these uh expenses like this? Or maybe we should be budgeting for these in the Fair Board um line items? Or is there someone that can sign off on these?
Right, and currently, we're we're just being asked to approve an over budget that there's been no oversight on at all. And we don't wanna be doing that. We're not gonna do that, actually, if there's no oversight. You, you know, for instance, sanitary has control. We know that there's, when we're asked to do an over budget, that somebody is looking at that and 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 doing it. We don't have that right now. And uh we need some guidance on this and maybe Alex can join in. We have, we talked to Alex about this.
Um yes, Commissioners, I mean, this does, this does happen. This is not the only instance of this happening specifically, this one we just weren't necessarily abreast of. But also, you know, in absence of Mr. Hart leaving in that time period where we do have need somebody. So for example, because there is no time, but you've sounded on that, thank you, Christie, because there's no temporary budget yet. What happens is when there is an emergency, so for example, Job and Family Services about to be staffed, timing that she's all together. Um but they had a very large emergency. I don't wanna really discuss because it's a little bit, you know, maintenance, those things get a little grimy. But um they had some issues with their toilets, their plumbing, uh which then shut down. Unfortunately, JFOS is a reliable building and once one goes down, it's a triple effect, so they had no toilets there. Uh we obviously cannot have employees working in a building with no restrooms. Uh so what happens then is the maintenance department gets an emergency call. They have to place a PO for a plumber or forever whoever they have to call out. Um Mr. Hart wasn't available that day. Uh I believe Kay was there, wasn't it? There was a lack of, I mean, in general, nobody was really available. So they called who? County HR. What do we do? We have no toilets. So then I worked with Shara to make sure that there was, but to to their point, who was approving those things?
Right, and there's no communication. That could be a Shara thing. There's not been communication with Shara, so it's you guys.
On this one specifically, the toilets did communicate to Shara because I got, I had to get the ball back.
Right, but on this, on this, none of us, we didn't know and and she wouldn't have known if we hadn't called her to question them. So you guys need to figure out your process, figure out your flow so that we know what we can do, what we can't do. Um as it is, we haven't, so we need to.
You never know the amounts. I don't know that you could put some sort of an an emergency threshold on an amount for an emergency situation.
Well, I think the question would be, do we know about this? Like, did we know about these specific? If we look at this specific circumstance, but metal grate and the lighting, did we know about this? Or I guess that's my question.
And not to get into the, I'm sorry, Christie's Eric Auditor's Office, not to get into the budget meeting for tomorrow, but as I recall, like when we're going through the Commissioners' budget, I don't believe there's anything budgeted in those Fair Board uh line items. Are you going to be budgeting for these items in the Fair Board line items or are you going to be budgeting them for them in maintenance? If it's the Fair Board line items, I mean, that Shara, she monitors those accounts. If it's maintenance, that's gonna be, you know, um so falls under the Commissioners, but that's a different department. So, you know, where do we move forward with uh those signings?
Well, I think we came up, well, you know, but when it comes to the fair grounds itself.
Yes.
When we talk about those telephone poles and the electricity, the county Commissioners own the own the facilities.
Yes.
So those types of things, if it was a safety or an issue like that, the Commissioners handled that.
Yes, uh Bill Hart, I'm gonna mean, it's the um, I've been waiting on these quotes for a while for the Fair, for the Fair Board upgrade. Those electrical upgrades are all federal specific breakers and switches that are, you know, upgraded. The metal grates are down at the lagoon ponds and they're gonna cover the holes where all the Gary would know. Where all the adjustments would go for the flow from the sewage to the freshwater to the to the chlorinator down to the lake. So those are just gonna protect that so nobody falls in the holes if they get in the fence. So it is fenced in area. So it's another safety issue.
So I think that there needs to be some kind of workflow so that we know that these are approved by the Commissioners' office, whether it's some kind of memo that's attached to the requisition. Um especially when we're talking about these large over budgets because I I was very anxious about approving that because, you know, we're talking about the budget, we're having to do setting that budget, you know, we're trying to figure out where the money goes. And then all of a sudden, we come back with a budget and we run it against what's actually spent. All of a sudden, you know, there's nothing there. We never budgeted for anything.
There's nothing budgeted in this line. And then now what Christie's saying is I, we have a dollar amount in this line that we need and she needs to know what the Board Commissioners wants to do.
Well, I guess you answered one of the questions was, are we going to record the Fair Board items in the Fair Board's division accounts or are we going to do it and just straight out maintenance?
See, that's not really a Fair Board issue. We're talking about the grates. That's a that's property across the street, fairgrounds. It's a sanitary issue.
Electrical of the church of the fairgrounds. So how do I know what is, or Shara, how do we know what is fairgrounds and what is maintenance?
And there isn't much leadership there and we can't make these decisions. That's not our job. We're trying to stick to the statutory limits of our job. And you guys need to take the lead and or appoint someone.
So you need an answer today about how you wanna pay those, right?
So you're.
If I want to pay.
Yeah, otherwise they're just gonna sit there, but.
Well, I don't think you're gonna be calling the Commissioner for that. We're gonna have to either.
Well, but it's coming out of the Commissioners' account, which is the problem.
It's right.
That that's what they're trying, so, okay, um and I can see, because I've looked at all this, just to try to help kind of understand workflows because of of course, I know what's gonna happen. Everybody's gonna say, HR operations, workflow, look at it, help us, right? So big call.
It sounds like this is like what an administrator would do with something like this, but we still have to give the administrator the power to hand that, which he would be making decisions without our approval, just under his authority of stuff, so.
Which would be perfect, Commissioner, if you had an administrator, but you don't. You have three administrators here, which is what I I need you guys. You are all being an administrator. So how do you want this to go moving forward? I agree with the workflow. We we and maybe we can take this offline, but we do need to have some sort of process quickly.
I would think, I and I don't know, but John's back there from CCAO. Uh without administrator, can the President make a decision acting as administrator on behalf of the Board? If he's not available, what can the Vice President do?
Or gives the President or the Authority to do that, you're good.
Yes, you have to do that.
Can't act on your own without.
I think, I think if that works that way, I think we do that and we have the structure of President Vezonabel. We have Vice President Vat, then it goes to the third Commissioner and we should, we, like I said, we are all three administrators.
Just to be clear, these are in cases of emergency situations or what are we talking?
The grates, the grates, excuse me.
Well, it's a judgment call because, you know, as as the President, I don't know what the grate is or what the.
They're just, they're just grates covering the pits so nobody would fall down.
Right, I'm just saying if it comes to a point to where it's a judgment call between maintenance and, you know, how.
I don't wanna get too hung up on the divisions. We can fix that after a VP and I'm not disputing the expenses. I'm wondering about the process. So for example, we have Bob back here, sanitary.
We used him already, right?
Bob is a financial person in charge of his department. If I'm gonna request that one of his accounts is over budget, I can send him a message and say, hey, you need to do a budget transfer to do this. Um and then I can go ahead and prove it because I know that he's going to be doing these budget transfers. He's aware of the situation. He knows those accounts. He monitors those. In this case, we have multiple departments that follow into the Commissioners' office that maybe we don't have quite established yet who's doing, who do I email on these or who do I send back to? Hey, you need to do a budget transfer on this. I mean, I called Shara, but Shara wasn't even aware that these were going on and she's the one that does the budget transfers for the Commissioners' office. You see what I'm saying? Like, I like, I know when I send something to there, it's gonna get done. I don't even know who to communicate.
So in other words, she wants something to approve it, but you would, you would know where it's going so that that it's proper to approve it.
And then I know that somebody's on it.
You would be able to lead me and you would be able to say, this is, you know, but I need I need an authorization to do that.
Well, I see their point. It'd be us coming back saying, Martha, watch this. You don't, you don't have permission. You know the authority.
Exactly what she said.
Exactly what we're trying to.
And then, Christie, you didn't monitor this enough. You have all these accounts that are over budget or that you let go through. But like I said, with Bob, when I let his go through, I know his are going to be on you guys' agenda next week. He will meet my deadline, even if he spends me ten of them at four thirty on Wednesday. So.
Here's my comment. If we're talking about the Fair Board, that's what we're talking about.
I think we're talking exactly, the Fair Board, but Commissioner for Council.
The the fair ground, not necessarily.
Well, the fair grounds, okay.
I'm sorry, that's my fault.
My suggestion would be that, you know, Commissioner Malloy, you know, you've been out here. I mean, you you know the fair fair grounds better than Commissioner Hernandez and I think that that's where he's coming from and he doesn't really know. You know, would you be willing, you know, to take it on?
Well, for the thing, that's could, what she's saying though, could be hypothetical for any department and those department heads aren't gonna know who they should try to go to.
Well, well.
It's just a Commissioner thing. And then it's easy, hey, let's go, and Brick had a question. He can call and ask questions or whatever on something like that, but but we should, as administrators, all have the power to do something, to approve something that is in regards to that, but then we gotta justify it. We we can't make a decision. It's out of sunshine laws, you know, that takes up.
Well, if it's an emergency, can we, can we talk with among each other?
No, technically, no.
Commissioners.
Not an emergency.
Commissioners, just like the uh the uh little grab bars that we purchased, you know, Kay, my secretary, um she goes, you know, maybe this should be done under a special account that, you know, she called up and talked to Christie or somebody and says, hey, this could come out of this account because Commissioners could buy that. And that's what happened. So my secretary communicates, but the little odds and ends things, you know, for the electricity of the church, you know, Jeff spent a lot of money out of his own pocket to make that little, or not the church, but the theater. He spent a lot of money on that little theater that he wants to try to finish this year to get it up and going, but there's electricity that needs running. So that's the cost of the electricity is for for that theater. Um and then the grates, you know, I've already submitted for other things that need done for out there before I before I leave, you know, I was asked to get some stuff done and trying my best. So lighting that we just got back from under the grandstand would fall underneath a grate that, you know, the Fair Board got. So that's taken care of. I'm upgrading the lighting for the grandstands above the, you know, the underneath, just to turn off some switches instead of foot and breakers with those dangers. So, yeah, I'm trying to upgrade what I can for the Fair Board, for the Commissioners.
We're not disputing the expenses. We're just saying that there's a lot of.
We don't want the responsibility for approving them because that's not our job.
And then we are being, and and again, we are being told by Kay or you, so that this was, the Commissioners want this done. But we're taking somebody's word for this and we don't have documentation. And one comes back later when we, you know, enter the year and we've got these over budget accounts that were never fixed. And we go, oh, yeah, we approved them because we were told, you know, so I feel like we need a little, something a little more substantial. Whether it's to not to us or to the department where they're attaching something, you know, that can be substantiated.
Assess, assess the prosecutor what he thinks.
Yeah, Bill, the answer prosecutor's office. I guess from my perspective, what I would say is that, again, it it just ultimately, there there really ultimately should be a point person perhaps that all even the department head should report to instead of going directly to the the things in some cases. I understand emergencies are gonna happen, but this is where without, you know, having, and and I don't know, I know perhaps Shara's transitioning transitioning to a new position. I don't know, perhaps Shara would maybe take on a little bit of an expanded role in some of this. But I think, you know, again, if you're gonna appoint the President of the Board, that's one thing, you know, but perhaps also think about, I saw another administrative staff member in your office already that could be maybe that point person to, you know, to help move these things along. Uh you know, it's.
Shara's new title is purchasing agent, I believe, isn't it?
Commissioners.
Purchasing.
I would see with Johnson Bush, I think that we need to, I was gonna say, went out there just yet. That'll be effective for the right there, but thank you, Bill. I think that we have a plan in place. However, we need to really sit down and look at that and make sure that that's what you want. That's all, that's all we're saying.
And and we're gonna learn more about this this afternoon, I'm sure. Put that on your list, uh, John, if you could. How do other counties do it? You know how they all do it? Let's talk about that during lunch.
However, I'm sorry, just so what Christie's asking and Martha, I hear them very loud and clear asking is this really can't wait until February third. We have monies out there encumbered that are just sitting that need paid. That's why she's bringing those to attention today. I think that we have a solve with our new organization moving forward, hopefully, potentially, the Board all needs to be on that, but.
And and February third is.
Yes.
And I have a, I have a videotape, you know, that they're that they're aware of this over budget at this point.
As long as. Right, and so we're gonna, we're if if the if the the Board is in agreement, we will move forward with these. But what we ask is that you guys do a workbook, figure this out and and make sure that we know who can do it. Just like we know at sanitary that we can talk to Bob. We know it's, right, we we know who we can talk to. So that we understand it and we're not left out on our own, right? That's all we ask. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, for five, to authorize Richard Hernandez, President of the Board, Trump County Commissioner, signed proposal amendment number one. This will your twenty twenty five Ohio Department of Youth Services subsidy grant, services to youth, families. Amendment is necessary for the purpose of adding a new restored adjusted program in a realignment and other grant program funds. Youth Services Subsidy Grant Fund one twelve operates from July one oh four to two thirty oh five. We're gonna plan that.
Uh, say, you've just gone to the court. So um we are asking for an amendment. We have filed for additional grant funds and a grant under this Ohio subsidy grant that we received. So in order to spend those and budget them, we would need to do an amendment to our grant.
Thank you. Could we keep you here the whole time, John? Are you having fun? Well, that's good. Sure the Commissioners are. Number six, to procure with the Trump County Engineer to grant special annual supplier fleet permit for fleet vehicles to transport aggregate concrete construction goods, other like materials not to exceed eighty thousand. You sure?
Yeah, positives.
All right. Go to Solstice and Sons LLC. Seven, uh, concur with Trump County Engineer. to not to exceed eighty thousand pounds gross vehicle weight to Jacob Lieber LLC. Eight, more contracts, RFP two oh two four oh one, purchase transportation. Twenty vendors request RFP ten responses were received. How much we want to read here?
Five, someone you probably want to read.
Five companies listed below recommended for purchase transportation. Provide on-demand service for Trump County residents using Trump County-wide transportation service for disabled and/or residents sixty years of age and older. Contracts begin March one, twenty twenty-five, February twenty-three, February two-nine, two oh two-eight, with a one-year extension. Uh, funding available as follows. SFY two oh two-five, section fifty-three-ten, specialized transportation grant. The amount of five hundred fifty-four thousand seven hundred twenty-eight dollars, ending June thirty, twenty twenty-five. Plus one million one hundred thousand dollar local share reduced by transportation costs expended January twenty twenty-five. February twenty twenty-five, following year is beginning funded by local share commitment of one million one hundred thousand dollars upon securing additional funding. Such as federal and or state grants, fund fifty-three-ten funds. The contract period should be initial thirty-six months from the effective date, possible one-year renewal. If mutual agreeable by the Board of Trump County Commissioners and the contractors unless terminated. It's recommendation to enter into a project funding agreement with each listed for said services. Contract language has been approved by Trump County Prosecutor's Office. Mike Salomon.
I just read, read the names of the companies next to the color.
Darwin Inc., Urquhart and Associates, All American USA Taxi, Sunset Transportation, Country Neighbor Program Inc., Union Bus.
Those are the ones that, that were just, the next two are the ones that were.
You want to read that, Mike? You want to?
The next group of what?
Are the ones that we are, these are other proposals that we rejected, that were rejected.
Why were they rejected?
I can tell you all that. John, actually I have this one and the next two. Let me get started.
Sure, yes, thanks.
It's gonna take me three minutes here, but let me get started with the one. Okay, so to start off, what I didn't review is I'm looking at all that by part of expectation for this RFP. So to even get to this point of this section code, this is to be known. So you may get to this point, I had the fleet, section one of section two of this. One, that's deciding now all the information they need. Section three goes with the county. I did not get the approval. That's the next one that's here, uh, yesterday. So this would have been, this would have been moved to next week. All right, but I got the approval yesterday. We had to move on. Okay, so it's saying that this third page here is the evaluation score form. That you get your third page. So it starts off and you can see how they are scored. I have the evaluations here too. But so the first five, Papa Caravan, Darwin, uh, Sunset Transportation, Country Neighbor, USA Taxi, they range from below seventy-four up to ninety-five. Then after that, Community Bus, uh, down to Community Bus, Loving Hands, Jodel, Marathon, Affordable, and Transnet, range from fifty-five to zero.
Who were the evaluators, Mike?
The evaluators, myself, Diane, and, and I'd say.
Okay, and why, why you only, why pick five? Or someone says we only have five?
We could have more.
Okay, we have six or seven.
Basically, as, uh, for example, Community Bus, uh, the, the cost for all these you can see are, uh, twenty-five dollars minimum. Uh, some are no, some are not. Community Bus was sixty-five dollars minimum.
Twenty-nine minimum area.
Right, as I say, there's different prices here. I'm not going to go through. Bus, Community Bus, for example, was sixty-five dollars minimum. Jodel's was, uh, seventy-seven dollars plus four. A couple of the differences. So that's where the cutoff was, was because of the prices. Also, some of these did not turn in all the pay.
So you guys decided only do five?
Right, Community Bus Service did not turn in all the pay. Okay, Jodel did not turn all the pay. Loving Hands was missing something. Um, Transnet, theirs was just, uh, instead of answering questions, what they did was just give us their, um, tops, procedures.
Well, wouldn't we like to know why, you know, why, why you chose some and why you didn't give us the reason?
Reason, I'm telling you right.
Yeah, but we needed it writing though. I mean, I needed, I, I got it in writing, I'd bring it tomorrow. That's what I actually had to see.
No, that's fine.
Knows how you rated them and why you rated them as you did.
Fire of old ads. First I have to sign this evaluation sheet.
Yeah, we'd like to see the evaluations. You had three people that you picked to discriminate, no commissioner on the evaluation. See, whether maybe you should have been one of them.
Okay, and I apologize, I did bring that with me. But like I said, the reasoning kind of was too, uh, too high of cost, too high of cost. The rest of them did not have funding.
Is this need approved for tomorrow or can we vote this till next week?
Should, well, we want to start these contracts by March first.
Well, you do it next week.
Then we can hold it. I mean, give us all the pertinent information so we, if we think, look, I mean, if someone asks me, I, you know, I need to know. And I think Commissioner, what he needs to know.
I mean, I could go right, right by office, bring them right back to you.
The one thing we talked about before, even in with the senior levy stuff, is they've expanded services to increase to buy more providers so they can serve more people. I want to understand why do we cut it off and say only these five?
Commissioner, I'm telling you, the reason we cut off these five is the dollars.
Show it, show us that.
Right.
Show us. Let's see, I mean, is it your decision on how much dollars we spend or is it our decision? If it's forty-seven a ride or forty-four or twenty-five or whatever.
You want to spend sixty-five dollars for a trip? That's your call. No, no, we don't want to. We just want to see it, though.
Maybe I don't want to spend forty-four a trip. As you, but you said that's okay.
Okay, I, you know what, yeah, what I'm doing, okay, I can.
Maybe you want to go with three.
Yeah, we're not questioning, you know, we're just looking to see the documented information.
Right, okay. Oh, yeah, I mean, so I have, I have the actual evaluation right here. Oh, I doubt that's something else.
Take your time, we have time, you know, we have times, you know.
And we're like to put this on till next week, we can do it.
Yeah, yeah, one hurry. And then it gets us time to look at it and then next week then we have questions, then we can ask your questions.
We can put this up next week. So.
That's for the evaluation form, see how the, why they were evaluating the scores that were.
I thought, I thought they were excited. But like I said, it's, um, this is cost. And the rest, the other three did not have pay. But I'll just bring it, I'll point that out. Okay, that's how.
Might pull this off then.
Yes.
So you'll pull that one or you'll pull?
Nine as well.
Nine. What nine is, it's the search sufficient insurance that had to go with this, a part of the contract.
Sunset is a new one, right? We haven't had Sunset before, have we? So we are adding one new one.
Right, those are those four plus one new one.
Okay, well, we used to only have four. So you made a decision to have five instead of six or seven. That's what we need to see is they let us make that decision.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Well, my other question, I mean, does price dictate the score or are there other things which?
Again, I don't have.
But I might, well, I'm just asking because, you know, we have Comfort Care at ninety-five and then we have, uh, Loving Hands at forty-five, I mean.
Right.
So is it the two main, the price or what's the main?
Actually, the two main, two main areas. How's this, uh, beat qualifications, which is twenty-five points. The other one is cost, which is twenty, it's forty-five. The rest of it are maintenance, which is like five points, safety, which is five points. There's other things, but I'll bring all that, you know, but I've got a score sheet that has all the information. Two main areas are. Do they, can they meet the qualifications?
Yeah.
Mike, I think it would be helpful, uh, Alex, to give us a go to general resources for it. It might be helpful. I think what I'm hearing the commissioner saying, I think this is the part that we're kind of maybe not honing in on, is that the score sheets, the algorithm of how they're scored is derivative from ODOT. Is that, is that correct or are you making up your own scoring?
The score sheet was out, but they, they have a score sheet also.
Who, who is that?
I was like, oh, ODOT.
Okay, are you using their score sheet?
No, I'm, I'm using some of the.
So we're creating our own?
Well, I created our own.
Okay.
From past RFPs and RFPs that I've seen.
Okay.
Like that other transfers throughout.
Okay.
So this is not something that I just came up.
That's what, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and the point system is like the stage, so like I said, the two heavyweights in this are cost. Cost is always your heavy, one of your heavyweights. They meet the requirements.
And then is there a proposed amount for each contract or that we're proposing?
Or, no, no, whatever they, whatever they, uh.
Like get assigned.
No, no, what is, they actually bid. They put a bid, they actually put their dollar on it. So Dave, so for example, Commissioner, Dave Mergans actually dropped his prices from what they were this year. He dropped it by a buck or so. Uh, so first year he dropped this, second year is actually the same as what they are this year, third he went up. USA Taxi kept everything the same as what they are this year for the next three years to the next, which was two twenty a mile at twenty-five dollars. It's like, it's the same. So we actually have two companies that came in less or the same than what they did in the past. But just off the top, yeah, USA got a seventy-four, but then Sunset got an eight. Right, those are rating lower. Okay, so the part of the reason is fleet. That's one of the things that are on here. USA does not have any fleet vehicle that are wheelchair accessible. Sunset cuts.
So wheelchair accessible is one of the rating categories too?
Yeah.
That's, that's the stuff we need to see.
No, that's fine.
And I'd like to see it, here's the companies and here's what they were rated across the. Make a spreadsheet that shows right next week your fair each one, without having to look at seven applications and pull them out.
No, that's not.
Put it on one sheet.
I have all that. I just wasn't sure what, what you really wanted me to bring here, so.
And then commissioners, in, in the boxes, not that it, it's just so the non-ambulatory, where it says NA or ambulatory, that's what, what he might be saying as far as wheelchair transportation.
Right, yeah.
Just so, just so they understand that, because they're seeing non-ambulatory in their box, but I know that coming from JFS and transportation, but I want to make sure that they understand that as well.
That's what, yeah. So you see some of them say NA, so, so for example, Darwin and USA.
Don't offer. Correct.
Right.
And you could see that where it says not ambulatory, which to.
Wait, that's, that's two of our top three that don't. We've had problems here before where we had a gentleman with a wheelchair that came to our meeting, it's only one company could pick him up.
Right.
And he was, he's waiting outside sometimes for forty-five minutes.
Correct.
After the meeting, because there was only one company doing it. So I would say, I would rank that as one of the highest categories.
No, Commissioner, that's why, that's what I'm saying. Sunset, that's why Sunset brought them.
I understand, but there's other ones that were out that say ambulatory, ambulatory or not ambulatory.
The only other one that's there, Jodel. I'll bring the prices and you make the decision if you want us to pay those prices.
How many wheelchair chair trips did we make last year? I'd like to see that.
Uh, Tom, I have, I do not know that Diane questioned, but we can get to that, yes, because we have it on our spreadsheet. That's not country.
Because if we only have a hundred wheelchair people, but yet we have another company over there that's very, very low in their, their average trip cost. Don't penalize them because they don't have a wheelchair, but they can save us money.
But then again, if we have only a couple of, or one company that has wheelchair accessibility and they pay more, we may have to pay that because the other, why penalize this company for spending the extra money to be wheelchair accessible?
Chair trips again.
So I'll bring that. And the other one is my, um, it is the my, uh, publicly recorded section, I'm chief saying that you've done with, I've done some, okay, I should keep measuring the line. Um, so I've got, yes, I'll do it. Yes.
It was virgin eight-nine or ten, not my.
Not my, yeah, it's, it's my. And I apologize, I don't just, if you want, I could read the numbers, like, if you read them, you can ask questions, I would, I would like to do it. Oh, with this look at this, we can address this and that's what I was. You know, okay, it's time to digest it. Yeah, you've got the numbers, we can go over, I can split, put aside for next week.
Ten, filling.
Yeah, just move that over to, that way they can look at the numbers and then they can ask any questions next week. Thank you, Mike.
Now, trip is one way, correct?
Yeah, these are all one-way trips.
So we're still averaging sixty-eight dollars for a round trip on the average cost. Cost per trip, thirty-four, thirty-one.
Yeah, thirty-four, thirty-one, oh, for a round trip.
That's a round trip.
Sorry.
That's what I just asked.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
So we're paying thirty-four dollars for a round trip.
For one way, yeah.
Well, one way or a round trip? Okay, so it's, so if they go and they come back, it's sixty-eight dollars.
Right.
Okay, that's what it said initially.
I haven't seen.
Someone to go to the doctor and back, go to the grocery store and back for paying sixty-eight bucks.
Right.
Doesn't sound real cost effective.
Okay, move to eleven.
And I don't know if you saw it while we're still on this. WRT was in the headlines this weekend for violence on their buses and they had to stop some bus routes because of harassment, violence, or the passengers were on there. YPD had to get involved and more with police, so. Need to, you need to look that up on the news reports recently.
Mr. Coggins? Yeah, Nick Coggins from Penicoot Commission. For item number eleven, we're, we're requesting authorization to publish the legal notice for the general public hearing for the community development block grant, uh, PY twenty-five allocation. And we're also requesting at that time to publish the community development implementation strategy schedule for PY twenty-five. Uh, the implementation strategy will consist of three separate meetings at three separate locations throughout the county. Uh, we're also asking for permission to send a notice to all cities, villages, and townships and other eligible entities, be some of our nonprofits throughout the county. Um, the application and notification of these, uh, meetings so that we can gather community information, identify target areas, create our implementation strategy. Um, the general public hearing and the CDIS is required, uh, this community development implementation strategy or CDIS is required. We're only supposed to, we're only required to have one, we do have three across the, across county to get more participation and get better involvement. Um, and this will help us identify, uh, which competitive grants will go after on top of the allocation grant. Um, examples of some of those is we standardly go after a residential public infrastructure grants department with our sanitary engineer. We also go after critical infrastructure grants department with our highway engineer. So, um, but this is just, uh, the start of the grant process. We have to get our general public hearing in, input from our communities in order. Well, I, before I do want to mention, uh, Well, I, before I do want to mention, uh, I believe, uh, Amy has spoken to both you and Commissioner Bernard. About possibly stopping at our office to see what is going on. Uh, Commissioner Bernard, I think you were scheduled for today in about an hour, so that might be a little tight. Commissioner, well, I apologize, we didn't give you an invite, but you aren't new, so. Uh, you're, you are more than welcome anytime you want, but.
Yeah, we have a meeting at CCA, so you might want to discuss that.
Okay. Um, and then there's no other questions, that was it.
Nick, this was for tomorrow.
Then, yeah, you are for tomorrow, Commissioner Bernard was for today.
What time's tomorrow? We have a.
Two P M.
Uh, two P M, we have a special meeting for.
I, I did send an email on, you might have got it.
I, I may not, no.
Um, just to respond to that.
Okay.
I, um, yeah, it's probably, I don't blame, um. Maybe we can reschedule for the following.
No, I won't. I have to look at the calendar at the office. I was, uh, just making sure that you guys were aware. I know you have busy calendars, so we wanted to make sure that you're aware. If, if you, uh, I'm knowing that you can't make it, I'll work with, um. Zach and Danette at our office to make sure we can, to a date that you are available. Um, we've been coordinating with Amy as your calendars currently. So if you do have something that you know, make sure you get it on your calendar. Per, so we'll work around her calendars that you have. Um, so if she doesn't see it, she thinks you're available. Make sure you put, tell her with your stuff, get it on your calendar.
All right. All right, thank you. Okay, move to twelve, Gary.
Uh, Commissioner, item number twelve, this is the service lateral assistance program phase three. Uh, Bill Metcalfe, he has done all the inspections on the houses in the Yankee Lakeville village. There's fourteen of them. And, you know, and, and I give price proposals from our licensed drain layers. Fourteen, fourteen houses within the building. Item number thirteen, this is substantial completion for our L Road water improvement project. Um. As you know, we've been, uh, working on that project for approximately six months. And, um, we sent sixty-nine curb boxes as part of that project. But this will do is I'll send letters on the property owner, let them know that the line is available for connection. Give them instructions on how to get connected, uh, let them know. People possibly. So just another step along the way, probably to go on how the, the cost finalizer, so. So we're not sending out final assessments or anything like that yet. But they, the lines is available uh for connection.
Ian, fun and quick.
Yes.
And then quick, and I can tell you, I drive over the road every single day, you can't even tell if they did anything, they did a great job of. Fixing anywhere where they had to dig, I know they did some angle drilling.
Correct, we're all, we're all, we're always saving this for, for all things project, not that much.
They put them in and out, you can't even see they were that close.
Not a lot of restoration, you just. Uh, pothole or you have the curb boxes, that's about it. You already that main line, we just put in with direct through, no trenches or anything like that.
Great job, Gary, great job.
Thank you.
Okay, Gary. Okay, fourteen. Please refer to, members of the Trump County Senior Services Advisory Council through a three-year term.
Fourteen first.
This was added after our transit, so there's a resignation.
Oh, you did, yeah.
Oh, what you got?
It's, uh, accept resignation of Jack Bartko, who's a member of the Trump County Senior Services Advisory Council. And Commissioners, I just got a, I got a text from Roger Peterson. He said that he didn't realize the meetings were in the morning, he has, works regular job and he would have to take off vacation days every month. So he asked that he, we please throw a support behind Jim Chicklow. So with the next one, I would recommend on fifteen to appoint Jim Chicklow as trustee. Jim to Chicklow is a member of the Trump County Senior Services Advisory Council.
And he's also a veteran.
Good guy.
Yeah.
And Chicklow is a very popular name at their commissioner meetings.
Yeah, I was waiting.
It's back in the news, the Chicklow is back in the news.
Do you know, Commissioner, do you know, I mean.
No, no, no relation, certainly not.
Okay, I was waiting for that. I was waiting for that. There's no.
It's not the person.
Oh.
Right.
Still back in the.
But it still is a Hall of Fame thing on agendas. Okay, then the next two commissioners are the reappointments, I'm gonna get a chance to review them. But I would, I would like to recommend we reappoint Robin Rowland and Sandra Scott. Um, both of them in the research I did over the last week. I talked to at least three board members about each of them and they all said they're both, they're doing a fantastic job and. They would hate to lose them on the board. One of them is in leadership position. Ms. Scott, I believe is the president of the board and they, they don't want to lose her.
You're right.
So I, I would recommend. That we add those names and everything, that's up to you, I know you're doing your own research. So that'll fill out the board then if we do those three appointments and they'll have a full board for the next meeting.
Okay, any other?
Then eighteen, nineteen executive session.
Well, you have eighteen, nineteen, where did I get that?
That's the old one, right, keep most of them.
Pick yourself up.
Yeah, I was in it so.
Wait, huh? There was one sitting here that says Mr. Hernandez on, I think I gave it some.
Give him my stuff away.
Why you left it sitting here?
Making me look stupid.
Did he even lay it around, we're gonna take it?
Look, don't tell me. Okay, so, uh, without any further questions, you have the measure?
No, 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 we just, we got one of yours.
All right.
So, um, that, uh, if you could pull that up for me, uh, a few weeks ago, actually early in the beginning of the month, we talked about. Putting the ARPA uh grants and projects up on your website. Um, I had, I wrote up a small, um, just narrative that I gave to you, I just sent it around to you and it will be up there. That's what's on the page there, you wanna, uh, pull up a little bit. So what I have is a small narrative, I've given you each a copy of that, it's just basically explaining what, um, ARPA was and what Commissioners have done. And then after the narrative, we have basically a simplified spreadsheet so they can see every single project, every single grant. How much it costs. What it, where it benefits. So with your permission, I would like to go ahead, this is not live yet. I would like to go ahead and put this live on your website with Commissioner.
Yeah, I've seen it, hey.
So you, I passed down the narrative, you guys have seen the information that's in the spreadsheet. It's a simplified version of what I've given you in the past. So nothing's changed on that, it's just information. Are you all right with that?
I like that, thank you so much for that too, that'll.
You're welcome.
So a lot of questions, a lot of people ask is where the money went.
Right, and that's why, that's exactly why we did it. Um, the other thing that we have is just, we have an update on one of the projects. And that is the Marx Tower project. Part of that project, um, required, uh, new electrical connections. And, um, I'm gonna let, uh, Mr. Hanford, I've actually kind of put him in charge of this part of it. Uh, uh, he's the head of my chief deputy and he's also our I T, um, director. Uh, he's gonna explain a little bit. There's electric to this site that is required for the Marx Tower. The money for that portion of that electric, just for the Marx Tower, can come out of the ARPA, what we have set aside for ARPA. But there are other parts to that electric as they updated it that Mr. Hanford is gonna review with you and.
So basically, what it took us about four months to get a quote out of Ohio is, it's pretty much standard for a project, like it's. They need to go out and survey and see exactly what was involved. Uh, they came back with a cost of about, uh. Uh, twenty-four thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars. Uh, what that all entails is completely new electric to that site. That site, as we all know, not only has a Marx Tower on it, it has a water tower and a radio tower, which is for, uh, I heart communications. The cost breakout, which you can see on the, the, the second page of what I just passed out to you, is the email that I finally got. Uh, estimate of percentages for each one of those, which would at least qualify us for, for the, the ARPA funds. And be able to designate a percentage of this twenty-four thousand dollars that we can charge back for ARPA. The third page of that is the map of the site, uh, only to reference what, um. What Ohio S and it used to, to estimate the, these percentages. And the last page is the cost breakout. So what we can use for ARPA funds, what it looks like for the Marx Tower is almost five thousand, well, yes, almost five thousand. Just under five thousand. Uh, the water tower also too, which is involved, would be another five thousand. And most of it, since it is the longest run, is gonna be that radio tower. Ohio S and Mark that a cell tower, that's it, right, that is the radio tower, which is going to be just under fifteen thousand.
Does I heart absorb any of the cost of that?
Well, that's, that's something, Martha, you're from the county. You have, you currently have a lease with I heart, you're only getting about a thousand dollars a month. Um, on, so you'll need to, I think, uh. Danzo is still here, you're gonna probably wanna review that lease and see if there's a way to get some of that from, uh, I heart.
They, they already have power to the tower, why are we putting more power to the tower?
The, the, the entire site needs to be rerun, just because of that Marx Tower, can't just piggyback onto them. The entire site from the street all the way back.
Will the old power still be there, so I, I heard it do?
It will be, the, the estimate was that we were gonna be down for two days at that site, water, the water tower and the I heart tower. So we have to coordinate with them to say, okay, you guys are gonna lose transmission, that's how, from that, that period of time. Now, whether they have, uh, power generators or whatever, they're gonna have to supply them.
Right, but will the old service still be there, can they just say, just leave it there?
The old service can, the estimate we received was approximately two days.
That's what I'm saying. Can I heart just opt out, say we already have?
Can we just, can we just?
You can't, you can't just opt out, you cannot just opt, they're running all new lines back.
So who's gonna power select water at the end of the road? If we take the power out that they have right now? If we get rid of that line?
This isn't going to take their power out, their power is not running, they, they don't have, they're not running off our power.
Where are they running off of?
That's strictly on them.
Oh, there's another line that leads to them from the road?
There's gotta be, if, if they run it back, I, I'm not aware that they've actually ran power back.
Well, they do, it's, it's functioning well, we talked to the people there, they, they do have power there, so.
But, but it's not coming off our line.
And they don't wanna share in it, to get to there, or has been brought to them to share in the cost of running the line?
When, when we originally started looking at this, the injection well, they had it all mapped out with the I S. Because of the no trespassing that we put in place, they, that, that was completely off the table. The Ohio S had to go back and redo all their quotes.
But they were gonna pay for it.
They were going to.
Why don't we let them pay for it now?
That's up to the board.
It's up to the board.
I mean, they have a business there that's already existing. And all, they, they don't have the right of way through our property with the power lines if they're there and they're willing to absorb the cost.
But also that there was, I, I, I don't know if it would have, I don't remember what the quotes were, if it wouldn't have been less than.
That, that, that was worked out with, with select water back there. So that's.
Right.
And that was very early on, that was taken off the table. So if, if we were to go back with select water, it's probably gonna, they'll, they'll probably gonna have to move the Ohio S and the N. It's probably gonna be another four months before we can power.
Right, and it's four months that we don't have.
Right, if we get rid of power and that is part of the power source, come out through that line that's already there.
That's not part of.
Or if they're gonna run a line anyway from there, why have two lines? When it's gonna power, power, come off the last pole and do our thing.
That's up to the Commissioners, you guys can do that. I will also tell you that if you guys want that, we've already done a lot of work on it. I put Tim on this because he understood, understands it. You guys need to figure out who you want to decide and, and determine if we can walk away. That's really not our statutory duty, again, I, I did this because of the connection with ARPA.
Would it affect the ARPA?
It'll affect, it'll, well.
Would they agree to that?
Well.
I don't even know.
In what way do you mean? It'll affect.
The Commissioner's talking about running that line.
It'll affect, well, if.
I don't know.
However, you guys need to get the, you need to get the power to the, to the Marx Tower.
There, yes.
Right, that's what our concern is, is that's what we were doing with getting the power.
They won't deny us if they did what he, what Commissioner said.
I, well, they, I don't believe so, but, but here's the deal.
But they're not gonna pay for that additional.
Right, well, we can't use that money, we can only use the, that's why we had to divide this up. We can't use the money, the ARPA funds for the water tower and for the I heart. We can't use the ARPA, that's why we had to divide it. So whatever, and if you get another estimate, then we have to figure out what part of that can, we can designate for the Marx Tower. And again, I, I've already done a lot of this work that's not my statutory duty. I, I stepped in because it was very disordered. We ordered. Went ahead and moved forward and got these quotes, cause somebody had to do it. If you want us to re, if you want these quotes redone, putting in select water, then you need to find someone to do that. Cause we're done. We've done our job.
I understand.
Just go ahead.
Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer. I'm just trying to figure out this part. Right now, the water tower and, um. Or that I heart, they have no problem with their electric at all. Why are, why are we?
They have to run all new lines back there, they have to run all new.
Right, but we're fine with the old line.
You know, our hasn't.
Why would, why would we, why, why would we have to pay?
Why don't we let?
We're not getting anything out of it.
Go ahead.
Commissioners, Bill Hart, Trump County Maintenance, I was running with this for a while and I took, that's for Tim. Um, O E, right now, your meter for the water tower and I heart tower is at the end of the street on seven. That's the meter that they read for your power and I heart's tower. I heart has copper in their meter base because it's, we're paying for the electricity, whatever they use. So for order to have O E come up the street with new power to supply the Marx Tower. Your tower and the communication for I heart's tower, they need to run all new wires. And they need to run a new meter base for I heart, since they don't have a meter now. They're piggybacked off of our power that we paid for the water tower. So everybody's gonna have their own meter and that's where they had to get it divided to where, say, okay. ARPA is gonna pay for the Marx Tower price, which is from here all the way up, cause only have a single, one single one-ten line from seven all the way up. We already had issues with trees taking it down, so O E runs it, O E is responsible for it. They fix it, they repair it, whatever happens to their lines, it's on them, even though it comes through our property. So that being said, that this, the difference would be whatever they got the quotes to have it separated is ARPA, is ARPA money, the rest is county money.
All right, Gary Newbrough, sanitary engineer, with all that said, we have no problem with our electric out there right now, neither does I heart.
But you have one seven, one-ten.
This would be an eligible expense for ARPA for the entire thing, because it's only their benefit.
So what we can do, if you want us to, we can, I can approach this with, uh, Tanya Rogers, who was our attorney, for ARPA. And I can ask to see, and we can explain the situation to her, because we, but for the Marx Tower, we would not be paying this expense. So we can, and there's money there that's already been obligated, we have the M O U for the Marx Tower. So there's money that we can use for it, it's just, is it an eligible expense? But since it, and, and I would hope so, but I am the attorney, nor do I pay the.
All right.
So I, if the, if it's, if the Commissioners want us to go ahead and request that opinion from, uh, Attorney Rogers, I will do that. I will, I will give that explanation, because were it not for, we would not be doing this were it not for the Marx Tower.
It won't hurt to get the opinion.
I'm, I'm completely willing to do that.
And just in a, sorry.
And so we'll, we'll move forward very quickly, I will, um, contact Attorney Rogers as soon as possible and try to get an opinion, because we wanna get moving on this. Um, we've already put a lot of time and energy into it, we want the Marx Tower to get up.
And Commissioners, Bill Hart, uh, yes, on Audrey Yoder's statement, the tower's dark. It's dark, it's three hundred and sixty feet in the air. Every, every week they have to put out to the F, FCC that there's a tower located at this landmark and potential hazards are out there. that there's a tower located at this landmark and potential hazards are out there. So that's where, you know, if you wait now, it may not be up and running until March.
So I'll, I'll get as quick an opinion as I can. And if the opinion is favorable and meaning that we can use all of that, that money's already been voted on, all of that. So we don't need to come back to you unless there is something else that you guys want me to, and just to inform you. You want us to move, and my question is, you want us to move forward with this as soon as we get the opinion from Attorney?
Well, I think we need the answer before we can answer that.
Well, I mean.
Let's wait and see what she says.
Oh, that's fine. I'll be, I'll be glad to do that. I'm just saying, in this, in the sake of time, if she gives us a favorable opinion, there is nothing, there is no reason not to do this unless you guys have a reason that I can think of.
The only thing I would say is, I know, I know it's unpopular, but there was an offer from Select Water. They wanted to use an easement to get be on the road to have a right of way, so they don't have to go all the way around their property.
The one point uh that I would make with that is they need a three-phase power block on the street. This is only single-phase power. That's all that is required for these three projects.
Understand that. But if they run the three-phase line and they say they paid the whole thing and give us a right of way to extend beyond McMullen Road straight, so we can make it right in our property and they pay for the whole line all the way up there, can we use their three-phase line for our one-phase need if they paid for the whole line?
That's up to Iowa. On that one, and I'm gonna say that you're looking at delaying this thing until July.
But we could get it free if they offer that.
It's not, not, is it free? Um, here's what I'll do. I will go ahead and um request this opinion from Attorney Rogers and I will come back to the board, but I'm going to remind the board, if you choose to go in this other direction, I'm out. Cause we've already done a ton of work. I'm not gonna invest any more work. You, you guys, we we did it according to what the other board had had wanted us to do. If you change your mind on it, again, this is not my statutory duty. I have stepped in and I have made a promise to several people in this room that I am no longer going to do things that aren't my circus and aren't my monkeys. So that's where we're at with it. You guys can decide that. I'll bring it back to you once I get that opinion. And if you choose and you wish to have that explored with select water, then I suggest you figure out who you're gonna designate to do that.
Is this part of the problem where they wanted to use our right of way and they shut them off?
Yes. We, we, they voted, the other two board members outvoted me to not allow him to cross our roadway, eighteen feet of roadway. They denied him access to cross the roadway anymore.
Is that by the injection well or something like that?
And he had other buildings there too, on the other side of the road that are his property. Our property cuts right down the center of his. There's, you can see the picture up up there.
What was their objection?
They didn't want, the other board didn't want to let him cross the road because he's an injection well business. There was, they didn't, they didn't even allow ODNR to inspect the well, to use it to cross it.
And and just. Just to interject a little time on this, this is, for me, this is not about the injection well. It's about the amount of money and time, or I'm sorry, time and energy that my office has already invested in this. In a job that's not our job.
Right.
Mr. Hanaford works a lot of hours. Mr. Hanaford has put a lot of time and energy on this. If you choose to waste that, that's up to you, but I'm done.
Get the opinion from Tanya and we'll see from there what, what way to go here.
Commissioners, can I ask one real quick question about this? It's more to Tim. So it's, did I hear you say it's gonna take two days to transfer it?
That, back when we first started talking about this, they said the power was gonna be down for two days. Bill, is that correct?
Yes, yes. So I guess the question just from Santa.
Yes.
It would be, will there be power to run our tower?
There, we we have portable generator.
Yeah. Perfect. I just.
Yeah, I think we, we discussed that one before we started talking.
Commissioners, can I, Alex, Steven, can I ask, have something added to the agenda? It's a nine-one-one new hire, everything. I got it after the you know, obviously cut off, but they really need this gentleman to start on Sunday. I'll add it to the agenda, everything who's passed this physical background check. Yeah, it's a nine-one-one dispatcher. We need, we need people. Um, and in general, Commissioners, I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us to add that. And if that comes up again, I I would hope, you know, with it being nine-one-one, it's emergency that we need them. So I will always ask Adam if we get them past the attempt, the submission headline. Sorry, I will get you everything, I promise. I appreciate you.
Mike, you have a question?
Just two things. Number one, regarding I um agenda item, I will send you whatever information that I've got, uh, send it to you to examine. Review with, if there's anything else you need, please contact me. That way you can review with for me next week. Don't be talking about next week, but that way you'll be interested.
Okay.
All right. Other thing is, Commissioner Boy, you called me a couple days ago about moving. And we had to spend, talk about this, it's Bill Hart's here.
Yep. What, Commissioners, back in October, um, we looked and we have three offices with one employee in each office and we have a, one of the offices at the Board of Elections, um, that department we got rid of. The employee there, Mary Beth, was moved over to senior levy. There's no room in the senior levy for two offices there. She has multiple offices in her building, so we voted to combine senior levy into her building and to move Mike into that building, because he worked so much with senior levy over all the transportation things, talks daily basically with Diane. We were paying for three coffee machines, three electric bills, three of everything. And then when the probate judge asks us for space in the, on the uh, the stone building to put up more courtrooms and waiting areas, he needs Mike's office and Dimitri's office to be able to do that. So in October, we voted to combine them, send maintenance in there, because there were some storage things they needed to gut. Some materials, supplies that were stored there for years. Alex and I went over and looked at it. And uh, there is enough office space for the three of them. Actually, it could be more if we wanted, but three, there's plenty of office space in there for that. But we needed maintenance to gut it, get rid of the old stuff, so that we can move Mike's stuff in and Diane's stuff in there. So that hasn't happened. We told them to do it in October. As of yet, maintenance is not going over there and done anything with the building. So um, I'm gonna ask if we reiterate, I asked Bill, please get the guys on it, that they, maintenance guys go over there and prep that office to get it ready, so we can make this move. I wanted it done this week and asked them to, but as of yet, nothing's been done.
Yeah, so my question was, are they gonna gut the building, which I did not know, not gut the building, take stuff out? Because, for example, and I know, I don't know if you've ever been over there, they have five, no, six steam.
Yeah, steamers.
Steamers is in the lobby.
That we don't use anymore, except departments, they fuck. Bill.
Yeah, that's right.
We're talking about move the maintenance. Nothing's been done since October to move any of those old steamers out of Mary Beth's office. To prep the rooms, so these three can move in this week. There's nothing done yet.
And I had no notification from anybody. They were ready to go yet. So nobody told me that the filing cabinet's emptied or, you know, she's ready to go or he's ready to go or Diane's.
Mike, ask Mike last week, just spent about an hour a day over there to to prep it with what he could do or get his stuff ready to move. And for Mary Beth to make a list too of things she needed out of there.
Yeah, that's what I was waiting on.
And then the stuff that's in there, we can move it over to Diane's office in the interim, store everything in there and then move her stuff over. But we need to gut the stuff out of there, so they have room to move it.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I I can't move anything over, because I was over there. The two offices that I'd be taking, I'll probably take over both offices. Both have stuff, so that stuff's gotta come out.
That's what I'm saying. I didn't get any word that she moved everything out. She emptied the filing cabinet, so I didn't get.
Yeah, so in that one room, there's four filing cabinets. Three of them are empty, one she still has to keep.
Okay.
So what I would like to do is the one room keep as a filing room. And I'll bring my file cabinets over there too. And then I'll have one of the other, yeah, however we figure. I got, I don't know which office is bigger than the other.
Yeah, we just need to make a road trip and look at it.
Right.
Put your name on the room and put your name on the cabinet.
Right. So my other question, Bill, is would you please have somebody come up to my office, measure my desk?
Okay.
I wanna see if my desk, at least one part will fit in. It's gonna be a closer fit. I know it is. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if it'll fit or not. The other two desks are already in there.
Yeah, metal dust or not real.
Nineteen sixty. Yeah, so that's, I just wanna see if my desk will fit. If it's great.
Did you arm wrestle Diane yet to see who gets first pick of the offices?
Well, Diane's already picked where she's going. She's going up the stairs where the windows.
Good.
That's where she's going. I'm gonna take one of those, I'll take one of those both two offices. See, the rest of, part of this goes on to, um, I don't have a lot. But I do have people that do come in and fill out applications, so I need an area possibly with a table or something.
Right.
Where people come in and fill out applications.
Right. But go, we need that front area. He's got all those warming trays need out of there. And when you go all the way to the back, there's storage racks in the back full of stuff that nobody even knows how long it's been there.
Yeah.
And he's got it out there.
All right, right. The other part that, um, again, Commissioners don't know about this, I do a lot of mail. You, I mean, you've seen it over here almost a lot by mail. So the question will be, how do I do my mail there?
Board of Elections does more mail than anybody in the county, with their department next door and.
And just use their machine or something.
Use their.
That's, that's fine. I, again, I didn't know and that was my question. But yeah, I got, like, right now, I've got five on the desk, so I gotta be on. So I come over here almost every day with mail. So that would work.
We had also talked about the thing too, is um, with time clocks. Mary Beth doesn't have a time clock there. Um, and we have a policy, anyone under department has to punch time clock. So we have to decide whether we want them to go on Board of Elections and punch in, or get a time clock and put it in that office there. And Bill, do you have any recommendations on that?
I do.
Yes.
Commissioners, you don't need to invest in a time clock. They, Cronos has an application from your desktop, like at your computer, that you can clock in, clock out. I've already looked into it. If we can't do that, uh, which is what my stuff does, again, it's on your computer. So the minute you log in, Cronos, you clock in, clock out. Can't do that, there's a mobile app. I would not prefer to go that way, uh, but there's two options. Please don't invest. I know we thought about that at first. There's just no need to invest in an actual time clock. I mean, those, I know a couple thousand, but it's a couple thousand. And then you have to run, you know, certain. So yeah, let's just make sure.
So we don't have any old ones laying around? We just move there from another department?
No, because when we switched show from Cronos, old versions to Cronos U K G, that required new time clocks and they are very expensive. Uh, so we don't just keep those on hand, um, uh, or otherwise, again, she can go over to Board of Elections and punch it, punch up to you. So we have other ways to to look at it.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah, so last week you guys asked me to put together a uh, little proposal on what we were looking at, adjusted down. Uh, Commissioner talked about ten cars. We adjusted down to six, just to kind of give you an idea of the estimate. I've got the estimate attached, but uh. Just asking for six new vehicles. Um, we have seven vehicles with over two hundred thousand miles on it. Eleven vehicles with over a hundred fifty thousand miles. Obviously, the maintenance on something like this is significant with these cars running, uh, you know, all the time. So we talked to statewide Ford, um, the estimate there they gave us was originally for ten vehicles, we're requesting six. Also, um, we need to add seven thousand five hundred dollars for the uh, per vehicle for all the technology that needs to be put in by the uh, uh, technology department. So twenty twenty-four utility for explorers package, everything done is uh, right around seventy-four thousand dollars per vehicle. So he asked me to put that together. That's, that's, that's where they're coming out. We had an estimate for ten. They didn't get back to me today. I don't think it's gonna change any by dropping it to six. Shouldn't change it all, but um. So that looks like about where we're gonna be if we get six vehicles or you can divide it per vehicle, seventy-four thousand.
And and that's with the seventy-five hundred?
That includes the seventy-five hundred, correct. And that's just something that, you know, and if we have any vehicles that have communication in it that is no longer workable, we'll, we'll take that out and use it, but um, Mike didn't think that we had anything available.
Bill Danzo Prosecutor's Office. I know I was kind of playing phone tag with the sheriff about procurement on this, but like we talked, we'd have to look for an exception to competitive bidding if we're not gonna, you know, intend to competitively bid these. I think there was some thought that perhaps this dealership might be part of Ohio Buy's state purchasing already. Um, if you're in touch with them at all, it might be good to ask them if they can provide you with any sort of um, state purchasing number or anything like that, so we can look up a contract number.
Okay.
Uh, if not, then we'll, we can talk further.
For sure.
About that, but I think it's something you guys, you guys need to be aware of and we'll work through it.
Okay.
I, I, I thought we were talking five vehicles and then one used vehicle we could use for the K nine. Yes, last week.
Right. Okay.
So. But we need to know whether it's state purchasing, right?
Right. We need to find that out first, because this price could be null and void if it's not.
Right.
Legal.
Okay, so I'll, I'll find out. One, one other much smaller thing that I was.
And it was fifty-five thousand a vehicle last week, we moved over it, plus seventy-five hundred. So this is about ten thousand higher than what scored last week.
Sixty-four. Yeah, so you're adding seventy-five hundred. One, one other uh, thing that was just brought to my attention, is there's a security risk in the jail that um, there's each pod these guys work in, I guess, they can't leave those pods, right? So they bring in these giant coolers with them, because there's no refrigeration to keep their food or anything. And, and they're just sitting there, they got these long straps or whatever on them. Really, what the uh, ward would like them to do is just bring in a, a bag lunch, you know? They don't have the people to search these people. They got these things laying around. They would just like to get, you know, uh, six small refrigerators for, one for each pod. We found them at Target like for a hundred bucks. I mean, it's just depending if they still have those. That was a sale on those. Um, that's something that they asked me to bring up. I don't have anything with me, but you know, a hundred, a hundred and fifty dollars to put a refrigerator in each pod, something that they just want me to be aware of.
I think that's something the sheriff can do as discretion, because I'm, you know, it's on our box, right?
This, that's not, that, that does. Okay, all right. Um, I will find out if they have a state first single order.
Sure.
Thank you, Mike.
Yes.
Thank you.
They see it.
John, Bill, anybody?
Okay, Commissioner, we have a guest here. John, if you wanna open and introduce yourself and.
Sure. And then we, we do have to get the road by two thirty probably, the latest. Jim has to get back the kids up at five, so. John likes assistant executive of the county commissioner's association. Um, Tim Hallerman is our operations manager.
Yeah.
Tim is involved in a lot of our service preparation programs that um, we share with John. John. And Mike Kendall is the head of our helping charity program. So you're well, you're very familiar with our property casualty liability guy, so.
Want to grab a seat at the table, guys? We'll just continue this, I guess. If you're gonna leave within an hour, let's just continue as part of our work session, I guess.
Yeah.
So make it all legal. Sure. Okay, Commissioner, we'll take a two-minute break and restroom break and then uh, come back and do that. We'll stay under the, stay in the workshop meeting.
Cheryl would be here, however, she has six today. Cheryl's some of our executives. We are out of. That's all right. You have a birthday.
Can you um, see if Lisa or Cheryl wanna join us for this?
Lisa's not here.
I'm like, sorry. Oh, she did?
Yeah.
Okay. Nevermind. This is our prosecutor, Bill Danzo.
Assistant.
Assistant prosecutor, charged by Commissioners.
Can you put like a break thing up on the zoom or just let it?
No, just let it, let it play. You're good. If someone's gonna lose anyone, they check back in.
Made a video, it's like all the Kinsmen scenery, it says they're on the break.
Would you guys come up early this morning or?
About eight thirty.
Oh, okay. Three hours.
Takes two and a half.
Two and a half, yeah.
Yeah.
Were you, uh, were worried for the game? Which one?
He, he works at Ohio State Stadium.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I was, I was there for the Tennessee game.
Oh, okay.
I didn't go to the other three.
Sure, the city's on fire down there.
They're all right.
They're used to it.
Mostly the kids. They had, they did the ceremony on, on Sunday. They were about. I don't know if you watched um, the Tonight Show last night, Ryan was on.
I heard about that.
And he said there were about forty-five thousand people. There was really. But anyway, uh, it was a nice event. Then they had them last night at the basketball game. Then they had him last night at the basketball game.
Did you, did you have a look at Sean Logan today, did you?
I was.
He heard you were going to be here, he said he was coming up to finance.
Oh, good. So you might.
Just with a, with a ring. Didn't even think.
So is our other question, yes. No, she was supposed to have a. Hey.
Here's Brad Ginger.
We are back.
I know, just officially announced.
Gentlemen, back from the break, CCAO. Yes, make a presentation or let us know when.
We, we were here just informally to get a chance and opportunity to meet our, our two new members. Uh, we have fifty five new commissioners that were elected in November. We have only a total of two hundred eighty two members when you figure the, uh, eighty six boards of commissioners and then our two, uh, council executive ones in Cuyahoga County, Southern County or Cleveland and Akron. So as I said, unfortunately, Cheryl Subler, our executive director, sick today, otherwise she would have been up here. We just wanted, we're trying to get out and meet the, the new folks. You're one of, uh, six boards that have two new commissioners. Uh, and most, rest of them just have one. Uh, it would have been, we've occasionally had where we end up with three new commissioners, so that's just a lot of fun.
And as you probably heard, Commissioner Bernard has been a commissioner for fifty years ago. And he's back.
And things have surely changed, right, Tony?
A lot larger.
And.
I'm not sure it has for the, for the best.
So, uh, you know, as an association, all eighty counties are members of the association. We need to stress, uh, state legislative activity. We have a policy staff of four folks. The managing director of policy, of course, we're starting to get into the budget. Uh, House, the governor's introducing the budget, uh, on the third of February and that will be in process through, you know, July. I mentioned about certain capital project ideas. Uh, there's probably, there are going to be a capital budget next year and there's that local community funding component that they've had in the past that, you know, it's supposed to be everyone community talking about priorities, but that may be one of the areas where we sit down with your legislators to talk about your community priorities, funding, talk about companies' projects. Uh, and see some capital funding for those projects. Uh, on the other side than the administrative side, uh, we have a service corporation, which, which Tim is actively involved in, now is our, uh, operations manager. And, uh, several programs there, we've been up and talking, the energy program, of course, we'll come back and, and do that.
They did do one of the bids on the energy program that we talked about earlier. That was the bid that I, I wanted to go with. They do fifty three other counties, I think it was.
Uh, we heard that.
I don't know.
We did one, no, from Buckeye and then one from these gentlemen.
There's the CCA.
And the other commissioners want to hear it when.
Which, which one was this, though? We are county commissioners associated.
So CCA has our own.
Yes, we are, but that's a discussion.
That's what?
That's a discussion for later, I'll, that always is.
We never got to that point with them because, um, the other commissioners trumped it. And they had their own favorites, um, they hughes with one, Morris with the other, then they came around together on one else, upvoted, not gone to them else.
Was, that was my original, I mean, the, the contract with Buckeye doesn't take effect until March.
Or we, but we're under it.
No, that was my question to Attorney Danzo, are, are we obligated, is there any way we could break that?
Again, you know, we'll have to, I'll look at that contract if that's something the commissioner wants to do. The concern that I would have again, though, is that the, the contract with Buckeye is one thing, and then I don't know if we are obligated separately under any contract now with so energy, not energy hardware.
Uh, dynasty, dynasty, yeah.
But we did find out today too, our county buildings is not under contract right now for that area.
Yeah.
So we are entertaining bids for that weekend, we signed up that we're free agent on that right now.
There are two programs. There's the facilities and then there's the aggregate and I, oh, that's, that's where, yes.
Yeah, the, the facilities is easy. You guys could decide, you know, you want to pick us up as a supplier, uh, without any trouble. The aggregation program's different because of state law involved in it, the fact that it's basically, you know, residents that, that come into the program, so. Uh, you probably, if, if you've already, have you already signed your energy, energy contract as product? Uh, how long did you do it for?
Fourteen months.
Yeah, so I mean, we'll, we can come in right away and start looking at four, you know, when that contract expires, fourteen months, we can be ready to, to switch it for you.
Now, don't get, don't, no mistake, they weren't like five, four, six, seven, they were still market rate with them, where they ended up being, it was, it was, it was about the same.
But I can't ask what that is now.
Well, because it changes every day, and then when they auction, when they bid it out, it's, it's based on the day they put the bid in with how many people.
But which, which is, which is true. The, the thing that we bring to the table when you're looking for supply is that we can get it slightly cheaper. I mean, it's going to be market rate, but we have such a volume in, in the marketplace that the suppliers usually tend to provide us with a bid that's going to be slightly lower than someone else, but kill a lot of our pricing or the, or the.
And we don't have to pay you anything for, for managing the program or anything.
No.
Like Buckeye, he gets a, he gets a fee, right?
He does. He gets a percentage of when he saves us.
So we wouldn't have to pay you that, right?
Well, we don't, we don't pay, well, this is made up, their board is made up of county commissioners, so it'll be county commissioners working for us, where, with the other thing, we have our broker working for us privately.
Then we still have to pay this one and that one, we wouldn't have to.
We, we would, we perform the, we're not technically brokers, we're basically your agents. You make all the decisions in our program. Um, you don't, you don't, you don't hire somebody else. We basically come in, put the RFP together, go out to bid, bringing the information back and letting you decide, and that's part of, part of our process. There's no additional fear cost or anything.
They have, they have an energy company, Palmer Energy, that's like Buckeye Energy, but they collectively as commissioners pull their people together and put them in the Palmer, so their Palmer's still getting paid a percentage, just like Buckeye is.
And how many, and how many counties do you have?
We, uh, are in seventy two of the eighty eight counties with one primary.
And, and Buckeye is in what, two? So what, that's what stuck out to me. He's only in, he's, he's in two counties.
Fairfield.
You know, and I, you know, I just.
He's in Fairfield County and, and.
Yeah, I see.
Well, somebody's.
That's a great plan, be right away.
Well, for aggregate.
Oh, okay, alright.
So you don't have to go on John, yeah, so we, yeah.
Alex says too much with this too, yeah.
Yeah, unfortunately. No, it's okay, but there's two, so he, for aggregate, I think he was saying he had Summit and Trumpal. Um, he doesn't, I don't know what he has for facilities. I think you have all facilities, seventy two of the eighty, right?
Um, well, we don't, we, it depends whether you're in gas or electric or whatever.
That's true, there's that too. There's that too.
Oh, I think we're, I think we're, I think we're sixty two electric and fifty eight gas.
Okay.
And they mix and match. Some, some political subdivisions, we simply can't do facilities for you because you're in a, in an RBA program or useful power. And we can hold.
Still worse mook.
Well, yes, we, I would agree tremendously. So we do the energy program.
I brought them to the table with it, and like I said, the one commissioner didn't show up for a meeting and she was all in, um, and for various reasons, they had, they had their favorites on what they did, that I was, I've gotten all that.
You know, we'd be happy, I'd be happy to bring Palmer over to the town, we can go through the whole program with you. And probably to prepare you for, for making the changes.
Those commercial ones we need.
Yes. But we can, you tell us when we can come back.
Now, is there a date on that?
That is going to expire in, um, May. And, but like he said, we had to do it earlier with the aggregate, because you have to put out twenty one day notices, you have to get the people. With this, we don't, that's what he said. No rush on that, because we could just boom, sign us up and we have the power to deal with that going out to the public and having them opt in or opt out, it's our decision. So we can negotiate with these gentlemen all the way up until probably April, and then still be able to get on their program or any program when it comes to the.
Yeah, we can make, we can make the switch pretty fast. We just need to, uh, accumulate all the bills and know what.
But we're locked in with them until April, May, I believe, starts anew and maybe June uh, for the facilities.
And not to get too far into the weeds with this, but I'm assuming with you guys too, you would help prepare or Palmer, whoever it is, helps prepare all the state paperwork also that needs to be done.
On, on, on the aggregation.
On the aggregation, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes, yeah, we do all that.
Okay, I, I figured as much, I just.
Follow, so. But for facilities, just a matter of sitting down with you, getting your load profile so we know what we're putting out the bid and getting it out to our various suppliers. Bringing your voice.
I think that could be a great area of opportunity.
And it would be nice to have, right now, one of, with each company, we're locked in on one, have a different one now. I would say just then we can compare and contrast for fourteen months to see who's products better rates better service.
Well, it'll be different because your ag rates are going to be different than your facilities rates just because of, of the consumption in the facilities versus what a standard, you know, residential consumption is.
But in general, John, would you say, I mean, it, it tends to streamline things a lot more, um, having one.
Um, yeah, it, it does, does. And, and again, from the standpoint of customer service for your ag program, you know, um, Palmer, we have dedicated folks that deal with all of the concerns and questions from that at Palmer, so you get immediate rapid response for your constituents. They have concerns. And of course, you guys use policy. Take care.
Well, you guys are county commissioners, just like we are. Your goal is our goal, is the lower rate, is the best rate.
Which, which is in essence, kind of where I'm going now with the service corporation. We do have a service corporation, we have a, and Alex has gotten involved with, uh, County Benefits Plus. Uh, not, uh, and, but we have a workers' comp, uh, pool, group rating and a, a run job to help, you know, reduce workers' comp premiums for you and get rebates on that. And we have Maximus, which are the guys that run around, well, they're shaking their heads, whatever. So the service, the service corporation is primarily designed to help counties save money, run their operations more efficiently and, and, you know, that's where we're at. Good things for your.
And Commissioner, I could, I could tell you, we haven't had the greatest relationship with CCAO as far as being involved. In Ashtruda County, they have commissioners there that are officers in CCAO and, and committee chairman and things like that. And we, we're kind of missing a boat on that. They did monitor what's been going on here the last four years. They understand, they've given us a lot, given me a lot of advice at least on navigating through some difficult times that we had the last few years, and they kind of stuck with us when they didn't have to so much. And I, I think while we invent the wheel, we, they know what's going on in all eighty eight counties. We should lean on them for more advice with little things, even our agenda things and stuff we went over today. Um, John, was there anything you saw today in our meeting that you looked at and just shook your head and said, well, they're okay?
Sitting back there telling these guys, holy man, girl, they're talking about dogs. That's the hardest thing in the world to deal with is dogs. And yeah, I was just kind of like, it was like, oh boy, I, I was sitting back there, guys, see, this is what a commission meeting is really like. You need, you need to get out and about, so. Um, and, and again, from the standpoint of the association, and I want, I want Mike to spend some time and attempt to talk about some things too, but, um, both of you, I think, have already signed up for new commissioner training, which is the twenty fourth of the.
Yeah, I haven't, I haven't, I haven't signed up either.
Well.
We didn't.
Okay.
Can we do that online?
We didn't, we didn't know whether we were traveling or, you know, or whether we were, uh, uh, there was, you had mentioned commissioner.
Our, our problem is, we've got so much to do here.
We're buried.
That's our problem, I mean.
And then trying to pull down a fan at the same time.
Can we do that online at all or anything?
Oh, we are not doing new commissioner training online. We are doing some things for new commissioners, uh, periodically that Rachel Massad Brady is doing. Uh, we had one on Friday afternoon, a little webinar on HR issues. Uh, there's sometimes folks coming to think they could just fire everybody. No, there's law procedures and, and, you know, uh, folks that you can have outside civil service system that so many employees, but the commissioners and stuff, so we tried to go through that stuff for you, we'll be doing some other topics, but I, I really do, I strongly recommend you guys come down the twenty fourth of.
New commissioners, that's a, that's a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. I would, I would highly recommend do the same thing. And I don't even know if an old commissioner could go through that too, but, but even the three of us went to learn from these guys, then have our meeting on twenty seventh or twenty eighth that week. Still have a meeting and just delay to get some training, so we, we're not missing a boat. We might be overlooking a little thing, and every little thing we overlook could be, may end up being a million dollar mistake or maybe thousands of dollars mistake, but I think we kind of owe it to them to get trained and brought up to speed. I didn't have it.
We certainly wasn't going to do that.
Have any good accents ever gone down the, the boat? Are, are boards?
Um, we, we do do them every two years when, when we have a new batch of commissioners. Two years ago, we had thirty seven new commissioners. Four years ago, we had, uh, fifty two. So it's really interesting how great the turnover has been. Average lifespan of.
Our commissioners in John County, I don't, I don't know. I know Ashtruda, I know Portage is more active, um.
And Al, I'll say one thing about you, I mean, you're, you're kind of, yeah, I'm going to ask, but you still don't call me like Sabrina does.
Well, there you go. The board's gone, so we need to be more involved.
You need your swag.
Um, and also, we have, we have mentors, uh, members of our board, we contact each of you. Uh, all of our board members are, are, uh, picking new commissioners to spend some time with. So you'll have a, a point of contact for someone outside the county who's been around the track a while. I think Sabrina, Sabrina has one of you, and I think Mike Halligan has the other. But anyway, they'll be getting ahold of you. And then internally, you know, we have a, a committee system where we do policy for the legislative platform and all that, we have standing committees. We certainly encourage you guys to, to kick into one of those. Those generally are virtual. Now, we have found it's much easier, easier to hold virtual meetings and try to get folks. So we just encourage you to take a really active role in the association. We'll have a, a summer symposium, and we have our winter conferences. Those are the main things we do, so. Tim?
And they do do training for clerks and for human resources too.
Oh, that's right. We have, you've gotten involved in that, right? We have a clerk's.
I've been doing it.
Have, are you in the, in HR group vote? Okay, alright.
Yep, even before I, yeah. Click, uh, all of that stuff, I do all of them twice a year. Well, we only, we're mandated to go once a year, but yes, don't worry, we've got, we cover the pair, so.
I mean, you saw our agenda today, and this is about the shortest agenda we've had in two years.
Half.
And we have to figure a way to streamline, and we look at other counties, we see they do their agendas on one page somehow, don't get in the detail.
It, 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 I mean, it's, it's not our policy or anything, you know, but a county if decides you guys need to concentrate on how to get it out. County administration really.
That's not going to happen right now.
So that would make, it just all, like, who, who decides what we're going on, on that one question? You know, you got an administrator, you got them in place, but they, they just take us.
Yeah, I know a lot of them have budget directors too.
Yeah.
How many guys are budget director?
And grant writers and lobbyists.
We wouldn't be doing.
What, what's up? We're a long way from that, I think.
It's your call. We're here to help you make it happen if you want to make it happen. And I think that's the other thing, uh, you know, questions, just call us. I mean, that's what we're, we're here to resource for you for spotting and it's on. You don't necessarily know the answers, but we know how to find the answers if we.
And in contrary to probably believe, we are allowed to go to events together. We are allowed to go attend meetings and learn. And that was something over the last two years, every time we tried to do that, I mean, I couldn't even say hello tomorrow in the hallway without a camera in my face and a lawsuit.
You're voting on that.
So, I understand, but, and so I would call John and say, can we do this? Can we do it? Hell yeah. You know, your commissioners riding the conferences together, all three in one vehicle from Ashtruda.
As long as you do not discuss public business, the three of you can hang out all you want.
I, I, I just think we need to be more involved with the micro, I, I just think there's a lot of wealth of information here that we're just not tapped into.
And, and you know, I, you probably remember it, um, but we have a county commissioners handbook online, which goes through a whole bunch of the, the operations of county government. What your guys' expectations are, discusses what other office holders and stuff do too. And then we also have county advisory bulletins, where if you. Where if you need a specific topic or something comes up, you can find it, the topic, if we've done a county advisory bulletin on it. That helps get you some good information to get started.
Very helpful. And it's, to John's point, it's it's broken down by each like category. So JFS is in every single one of your departments and. Gets into kind of how they're funded, how they're not funded, your role in that organization. It's really beneficial commissioners.
We're doing budget hearings now and and we had.
You guys did a temporary budget?
Yes, we we approved every budget till March, but we are.
Oh, I'm sorry, temporary?
Yeah.
Yeah, we had till March, I'm sorry.
But we had sixteen million dollars more in, or eight, fourteen million dollars more in asks we have available.
Thankful, that's all.
We had to cut eight million dollars last meeting. Tomorrow, we had to try to cut six million more, which isn't a very popular thing deciding. What percentage share support we gets compared to other ones and what they all have needs. And that's something where guidance. To me, looking at the handbook, I've I've been the website a few times over the last week, just trying to figure out what standard I'm with, where. Where is the balance between?
The the only general advice about shares budget, you are the budget authority across all aspects of county government. The key is when you're looking at cuts, the the only case law that's out there on the subject of budgeting. So you just can't simply make cuts by saying, all right, we can cut two percent. Can't do indiscriminate. Processed word budget. You need to be very concise and and have good logical explanations for. Why you're making cuts, a simple process word cut, so everybody shares a pay, that that will.
The percentage thing doesn't.
That will.
Doesn't work, right? That's a good thing we didn't go there.
That will get you trouble. That's what I'm talking about. A budget director, working with the auditor, working with.
Commissioners, that's why you have to go one by one. So what you're doing is not necessarily incorrect yet. What he's saying is a blanket, everybody gets cut ten percent. That's not okay. We are, you're not doing that. You are going department by department, to be very clear.
But we we were advised maybe to look at it that way. Remember, and we said no to it.
Yeah, that's right.
So a simple way to fix your problems is not say, okay, everybody's so busy, all right, everybody loses two percent. That gets you in trouble. That's why I only advise. All right, now, Tim?
Uh yeah, I guess I'll just speak on the service corp side of things. Um we have several really, really good programs. Um and the service corp program, the mission is in the end to save money for the counties, right? And that's 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 our end goal, that's our mission. How can we make your guys' life easier to save some chunk change too, so? Um I know we've had County Benefits Plus up up here, uh I believe you were working with Andrew on that. Um how that enrollment process been okay? I mean, everything?
You guys are phenomenal.
Okay, great. Let's.
No, you guys are phenomenal. We we um. Truly don't think we have this conversation, I'm sorry. Sorry, it's not.
Good, excellent, great. Um so I mean, County Benefits Plus is our second, well, benefits in our group. Like the um offering, um it's a newer program, about two years old now, um really excited about that one. Um but we have stuff outside of the energy and workers' compensation program. Uh we have three. Amazon Business Prime that we're offering to the counties. Uh we have a program called County Firm, which is a kind of a facilities management company, and I kind of wish I could. I'm making this guy here, we're doing a facility summit in just a few weeks, we're hosting it at our building.
That would be really beneficial. If you wouldn't mind, can you send me that information?
We're hiring a brand new facilities guy right now. That guy's not leaving too. So it'd be perfect to send the new guy directly to training for that.
I mean, indoor book.
But yes.
Why not send them both at the same time? So we have two that we're getting ready to hire, um.
What's the date on the training? The summit is the eighth, whatever that.
It's next. It's next Wednesday.
Yeah, uh next Wednesday, whatever, the fifth.
Drop it right in the fire.
Um yeah, and the idea of that is just to get basically all the facility guys from around the county together, kind of create a community. Well, those guys can start calling gang, that's what happens, start going on.
If we make a decision by next Wednesday, we put on the agenda to do that, there's nothing.
Well, but the the meeting is next Wednesday. So how would they be two places at one time? And also, you have to be a vendor and remember the person who ordered beforehand, guy. Conferences, come on.
All they gotta do is drive down.
Okay, there's no, there's no cost. Okay, but what if they want mileage?
Well, that's up to me, you know, that's your.
Yeah, Alex is looking at me, he's like, Alex is part of the policy, man.
It's in Columbus?
Yeah, it's in our, it's in our office. And and what we're trying to do is, is we we recognize the void as we're looking across county government. We don't have our facilities people talking to each other, and so this is what we're really trying to do, because like, we have our administrators talking to each other, our clerks. You know, our our health folks. Uh yeah, it's just, it's it's just Wednesday.
Yeah.
So.
Can we ask if somebody wants to go for a ride?
You can always ask.
I mean, just ask them. It's it's gonna benefit them.
Yeah, most of the other information for sure. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Um.
Yeah, they don't.
You don't believe it's working, I don't.
Break a vacation.
We can ask.
If we go for that, that that would be worth asking if it's a one type type thing, it might be a great way to.
Ask, like, some days, no, and then hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, it's it's great, it's great. Um so yeah, anyway, uh. And then we also have a like a cyber a cyber uh defense program that has been on nineteen years too, so. Uh we can tailor to your IT needs that you guys have as well, that's so. A variety of programs, uh feel free to check out our website, they're all listed on there. Uh again, it's to serve the counties in the end, so. Um I can, uh I'll give you one of my cards too. Um Steve Caraway, I work very closely with, he wasn't able to be here today. Uh but he and I are kind of ones need to even search for precious hours as well, so.
Try to do less.
So, um yeah, I'll give you my card and that. So, um Mike, I'll hand it over to you.
Thanks. Uh Mike Kendall, I'm Lasevco. I'm the managing director and we're the county employee benefits. Corporation of Ohio, and we do health insurance. We have forty-nine counties in our program. We're not the least expensive. We do their price stability is what we're looking for. And over the, this is our twenty-first year, we've averaged about a five percent increase in trend from year to year. And health insurance, so we provide counties with a monthly rate, so you would have. Employee, employee spouse, employee child, family, four-tier, two-tier, however you want to set up. And we would give you a rate for the year and doesn't change. The only time that premium changes. Is when your enrollment changes, so you know you're gonna have basically a fixed cost throughout the year. We cover almost seventeen thousand employees, about thirty-seven thousand members. We're with Anthem, Blue Cross, and Blue Shield, we are their biggest account in the state of Ohio. So when counties come on board, we ask for a three-year commitment. And part of the thing with the three-year commitment, when you leave us, we pay the right amount. And so far, in our history, we've had five counties leave, three of them have come back. So, you know, we're at forty-nine. Uh net of fifty-one, so.
Take my. Are you seeing? Are you seeing a trend with um with hospitalization in general and, you know? Alex has worked her butt off on this kind of stuff, but and I'm kind of, with my former township, I was a trustee there, so. You know, dealing with hospitalization, but we know there's, there seemed, and we know that we're self-insured to a certain point here. But what what type are, is it like, are you, are are most of you, i- is it across the board, um? Just straight health insurance, no savings accounts, no HRAs, what?
We don't do any of the HRA or HSA accounts on the side, but we have, you know, we offer HSA or. Uh PPO plans, so that's, but for counties, uh realistically, most of them offer PPO.
Yeah.
And when you look at the serve report.
Yes, yeah.
You'll you'll see that, you know, we kind of, we allow the counties to come in. They select their own plans. We don't, within reason. Uh we don't mandate s- any certain benefits. We try to keep it somewhat standard. Uh but again, depending on the plan you have, you know, you're going to uh. Pay for that if you have a very low deductible or a high deductible.
So that, yes, commissioners, um that is the key there, um dependent on the plan that we have, right? So, um Mike, I don't, I want to be fully transparent with you. We are in no way, shape, or form ready to explore this, and here's why. Um for me, um healthcare was negotiated into our contracts. What that means is the plans were negotiated to our contracts. Right, look at John shaking his head. Okay, yeah, so that is what I am dealing with right now. Um and we're working very hard. I have been able to negotiate it back out. But as you know, if anybody here has sat through negotiations, it's 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 very difficult. Once legacy plans are embedded into plans, on top of that. Premium percentage was tied into a twenty-eighteen rate and never moved. So we have had significant, 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 I mean, I'm telling you. Hurdles to overcome. Um we're almost there, uh but again, I can't do anything, as you guys know, unless I get it out of the contracts, so. It delineates what plan they have down to the deductible, down to the, it's it's very robust, yeah.
But we are, when it's underwritten, it's underwritten as a whole first. So we look to see what the pool needs for the renewal, and then it's dependent on the county's experience where. Your renewal increase comes in play.
You mean the experience rating, so like, because it's a risk pool as a, as in Corsera, so we are not only. So it's kind of similar to our, to our insurance, you know, obviously through Corsera, so it'd be kind of changing from a self-insured where we're only responsible for our risk. Our claims, our high claims, and maybe potentially be taking on all other fifty, forty-nine counties, correct? Like, it's a risk pool sharing?
Well, not really.
Okay.
So let's say this, this year we had a seven percent renewal increase. And we put guardrails in place, so uh zero was the lowest we would give out, eighteen was the highest.
Okay.
So, you know, irregardless of, and there were counties that were well above an eighteen percent. Need for their health insurance, but we, the pool.
Kind of.
Absorbs that.
Gives it like a median, okay.
And then we assign each county a stop loss.
Oh, very good. What is that, or each, it's different for each county?
It's based on size.
Okay.
So I'm going to guess.
So two hundred thousand is our, I'm sorry, our employees on, we have currently a thousand roughly on the insurance.
So.
Give us.
Two hundred thousand dollars would be stop loss. So that when we go for rate setting time, we take out any claims for each employee. That go above two hundred thousand, so then we'll pull those back out. And then on top of that, then we, the pool sub ensures up to a million dollars, and then we have stop loss at a million dollars.
Okay.
But, you know, we're always there. Robust wellness program, we include Cobra in the rates, we have the wellness program. We provide dollars to the counties that they can use for the wellness program. Uh a lot of things that we have built in that ma- make it much easier to administer.
Yeah, you have a designated county rep, so you have, you know exactly who you're dealing with.
Hospitalization is quite an app.
Something else, because we, well, and this year, uh we have Anthem and they went down to December thirtieth. Before they signed an agreement with OSU Hospital, so that happens. But, you know, it's Anthem this year, next year, it could be United Healthcare, it could be another.
And then, um, just the, my last question is, do you go out to bidding?
No, every three years. So we're we're on, we, we're formed by under Ohio Revise Code.
Okay.
So us going out every three years satisfies the county's requirement to go out.
I'm sorry, I think you, I meant, that made any sense with the three year commitment. I gotcha, okay.
And so this is the year that, this is the year we are out for bids, so. Uh you know, the RFP, we do medical and the pharmacy, kind of combined and then separate, so we'll look at. You know, the carriers that they have a carve-in where they have their own pharmacy, but we also look at. Uh a carve-out, where it's a different pharmacy from the medical carrier. And so Anthem has been the carrier since the very beginning, just because they provide the best discount. For the SEPCO camps. We're on our third pharmacy. So pharmacy is a lot more fluid and a lot more uh. Wild at this point.
And then do you guys dictate like the tier ones, tier twos, tier threes, or does the county still have the?
No, we have, we have our own formula.
So we couldn't, no, oh, that's very important, okay, thank you. Not, that's, I'm just, that's very, very important. As you know, to people who are, you know, unspecific that, so we delineate what's a tier, well, I myself in our, you know, we delineate what's a tier one. So everything that you're doing, I currently do for the county with our broker by myself, literally, um. Yeah, I know, I see your eyes. And I do, I do all workers' comp too, all of it, the whole program, MCO, TPA, all of it, so, yeah.
And one of the interesting things that we did, that our board did this year, and we are governed by a board of twelve county commissioners. Uh we excluded GLP weight loss medication.
Good for you, I'm glad you were able to accomplish that. But not for diabetics, correct?
Well, that, no, the GLP ones, we still.
Very unfair, okay.
But no, for the, for the weight loss, because we saw in the last couple of years, I think the uh. The trend on just that category of medication was like two hundred and sixteen percent.
Yep.
And the one medication, Zepbound, just came out in December of last year, and, you know, I think. Our December of the previous year, and I think first year, seven million dollars is what we spent just on that medication.
And I spent that and then our, um. Yeah, well, that's why I was asking, so right now, we currently, yeah, obviously, we currently allow.
Cover now?
We do, but it has, but we do pushback, so it is something that we do. It has to be prescribed for the right manner, for the right reasons. Uh we do, we do have pushback and controls and process there, because our spend was going out of the roof. Uh and then additionally, the next highest spend in our category is the biologics, so the cas- the casetix, the Humira, the Trinbiya. All of that, um so that is our next highest spend as far as, you know, um prescriptions. Annual reoccurring prescriptions go, um but of course, we get significant rebates to our care, so, which we need, we rely on those. So it's, all the things that you're saying are wonderful, I I just don't want to lie to you and say that we don't already have them in place. I, believe it or not, I already have this all placed. We have our own stop loss, we have, I mean, we have. But again, I can explore once I get them all out of contracts. That's my, that's my number one goal. I can't move, I can't do anything, I'm I'm pretty limited. On anything until I get all these legacy plans out of the contracts.
And what we've also done for some of the counties, and I'll I'll cite Wyandotte County, other side of the state. But they've quoted with us the last couple of years. They didn't come with us. But we saved them probably half a million dollars over the last two years because they had a competitive quote. That they took back, and that's, this case, they have MMO, they took back an MMO, dropped their renewal, so.
Wow. No, this is all wonderful, wonderful.
That's because we're all wonderful.
You are wonderful. You really are, you tru- you truly are, very much so.
And when you're ready, you know, we're there as a resourcer, you know, if you have any questions, more than happy to answer. Wellness program. You know, there's always a lot of things around that, so.
John, changing subjects while you're here. Our biggest, which is probably this way statewide, is Sheriff's Department, thirty percent of our budget. Well, I'm I'm just trying to look at the biggest, you want to help them with one thing, but I mean, they could, I mean, they could, they could take forty percent of the budget if we, if we had it. Uh what, how do other counties deal with that, or what is the, what are the big pushes in other counties?
It is generally the largest chunk of an operating budget. Uh when you look at criminal justice, when you look at your courts, your criminal side, your prosecutor's office, public defense, sheriff's department. Jail, it is approaching now seventy percent of the general fund. It's your, by far, your hugest concept.
I just wanted, like, Columbian County was talking to the prosecutor, he's got like a nine hundred thousand dollar budget for his prosecutor's office. There's three prosecutors or four in there, Sheriff's Department. There's three prosecutors or four in there, Sheriff's Department, I think only has like nine deputies. And it, it seems they're only two counties south of us, you know, where we are. At the other extent of things, I wonder how many others are like that, or are there other means to, to help out besides our general fund when it comes to to, to managing this, handling this in a three hundred person jail we're responsible for.
I think it's hard to compare, for, for CCO, it's, I, I would just assume, and don't make me wrong, it's hard to even compare because everybody's funding streams and sales tax and or FJ tax percentage and or whatever the case may be, are extremely different in each county. So that makes it a little bit complex to compare apples to apples, Commissioner. Uh, so for example, Mahoning County's FJ tax is point seven five, ours is point two five. That's a lot of money in difference of what you're bringing in to support your safety services. But that's all I can say.
State gets five point five percent of our sales tax.
I think that's what it is. You, what counties can have up to two hundred percent sales tax. Uh, and what you use it for, there, there, you can specifically allocate some, but I mean, sales tax or, sales tax or exactly, they get all general funds, so they have full discretion on how you use it. But in some instances, they found it's easier to get, not to be supported by earmarking a certain chunk of, or a certain percentage of, we're going to answer this tax on certain chunks, you know, uh, to the specific, uh, cause of Washington County. But the other
And some have special assessments too, like just straight flat special assessments for?
You can, I'm not aware of any of those right now, but, but you can, and you ever talked at nine one one and, and funding nine one one and yeah, she's, I was on the statewide nine one one committee till came assistant director, started to handle it, it's like, yeah, the state's not pulling its weight, the legislature is afraid to increase funding because they look at it as a tax grant, how we're the third cheapest as far as, you know, assessments on, on, you know, service to, to, to support it. I mean, five, six, seven, eight dollars a month in some county, in some states. Chunks of it go directly to the counties and, and where we're at, the, our, our board recommended a seventy-four cent uh, increase in, in the state legislature than doing. And now they found out what they thought was enough money is that the numbers were way off. So that's, 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 um, nine one one's tough.
Very tough.
What about the statewide property value increase they do every six years?
That, you know, and that's a function of, quite frankly, that others that you're inside village. Just because you change your valuation doesn't change the amount of tax collection. What it does do is it throws off what percent you're paying, because your property, the new assessment is, is your percentage of the pot. And if, if you got now more, a higher value than, than you had in pots, where, I mean, that's how you can have your property taxes go up and down. But yeah, I don't know really what the answer is around that question, because the valuations are increasing. Uh, they're, they're, they're rated on, you know, you know, arms length transactions. And, um, people are paying exorbitant amounts for real estate these days. It's reflected in the property evaluations. And where it is in the long run is not so much these taxes, but when you go for new levies, you go for new levies. You know, it lowers, you know, the amount you probably need to ask for to raise the same amount of money.
Does mineral rights tie in all that with the boat they have with energy? Uh, minerals, mineral rights land up, which causes us to be on the
The, it, yeah, it could. Mineral rights and, and those taxes primarily are, are, uh, and they have the lower tax, so they don't really get reflected in property tax, uh, collections. But I'm sure if you got something under the ground, makes the, makes the property more valuable. You know, makes somebody more interested in paying more money for it. But, so.
What I'm, what I'm kind of finding out is that the state counties aren't, aren't getting a raise from the state. In other words, if there's a, a, a seven percent, um, tax that they're taking, right? They're only giving the county like one percent, okay, of that seven percent. Um, for instance, uh, I talked yesterday to the recorder. I think she said it's like, and I forget the number, but it's costing her more to, um, do whatever she
Record deeds and, and they've increased the recorder's cost. The state's getting most of it.
Yeah, yeah. So we need, in fact, I talked to her, you know, we need, we need to lobby them, send down a resolution saying from taking it from one percent, maybe we need to take it, and, and she recommends somewhere between two and five percent. Because we're just not getting enough to cover, covering our share of costs. And, and I'm hearing that all over. And, and I also had a meeting yesterday with the, with our county treasurer, and, and, and he voiced the same thing. And so when we have, uh, we have our state legislators coming in here, and we're talking about property taxes and all this. You know, I asked him, I said, would you be a part of this? And he said, absolutely, because he's got his own ideas. And, and so, you know, we, as a whole, I don't know if that's been done in the past, but we're going to have our state people up there.
Uh, we encourage that. Uh, we will actually have, uh, this is from the statewide association perspective. But we will have a regional legislative briefing. We usually do it by senate districts. Put two, maybe two senate districts together with the three house districts of each one, and those counties. And, you know, we have you guys, first of all, contact and say, hey, we're doing this, come to the meeting. And then we, we do basically a lunch and a presentation where our folks on our, our policy staff come in and talk about our statewide legislative priorities. And then you guys talk to them about what specifically is of interest to you guys. So we do that as a matter of course, but, I mean, anytime
Well, we're going to have our own right here.
Absolutely. Anytime you can sit down and talk to your legislators is, is beneficial to I mean, we, we talk at the state association. I, I can't win a vote at the general assembly, but boy, you guys can. You're, you're our best lobbyists. You're the ones that get results. Uh, because you're the ones that are, are, you know, with them, they have to respond to, just on state staff. But you guys are the ones that
Well, I think we're on the right track. It's just, I mean, it's the beginning here. I mean, I don't think they ever did that before.
A little bit more on, we were talking about sales tax, state sales tax, and diverting monies into the gym. This county hasn't had a sales tax increase since oh five, I believe.
Twenty thirteen.
What do you guys have? I mean, you, you have so five, we already Do you have capacity allowed?
We're six, seven, five.
Why would OSHA have the county one seven?
About one, two, five.
Boy, I just had that in my fingers, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm finding that it's hard to operate, and you can't go to the homeowners or property owners with these levies and these, you know. But they want these services.
That's right.
How do you squeeze the blood out of the rock if you're not? Where, where's it come from? I mean, I'm in business, you know, I'm, I'm self-employed in business before, so I'm a businessman, you know, and you got to watch, you know, you, you, you got to watch your budget, but at some point to get these services that we, we're looking at ten million, twelve million dollars, what do you do?
Uh, you know, it's a question of tax capacity and how much the community is willing to, you know, to bear. I mean, as the state increases taxes, I mean, that makes me less willing to pay something locally for you. Uh, and of course, then you got, you got the income tax component, which the state is really trying to work hard to, to drop, reduce state income tax, so. Uh, you got the state sales tax component, because they have their five
I think it's five and three quarters.
Five and three quarters.
Pretty sure.
Um, and so when you go to put on your, yeah, when you go to put on your permissive up to two percent, I think it's, it gets harder and harder to, to deal with. Then you've got your property tax levies. And, you know, there are a million, billion, not a billion, but there are many different categories or types of property tax levy you can put on. Uh, they're all in special levies, like D V and, and, you know, senior levies and all those kind of things. And then there's the things that you guys can do, just, you know.
We just had four, we just did, but they were all same, like she was saying, drug addiction.
Yep.
Senior levy.
Yeah, so we have very big levies. I mean, children's services, again, with Canada's size, it's obviously very large. Senior levy, uh, mental health and recovery board, and then the board of
Children's Services.
So there's at least four. Who else am I missing?
Children's Services Board.
I got them.
But, but once again, but once again, children's service, where they can put on any levy they want. And, and, and it'll pass because of their track record.
Try, try to, try to, try to, try to lose the library letter. Doesn't happen. They just pass.
I mean, and, and, and that's where, and that's where, where I think this board, we have to show more accountability. And, and we have to get confidence back in this board with the taxpayers before we can go to them. You know, we have to show them that we've, we've crossed, you know.
But I, I don't know if we'd ever get to that point, Commissioner. They, they just don't trust government. I don't trust government.
Well.
I don't trust anyone outside this room.
I trust government. I just, I don't trust some of the things that, that, that we do. I think, I don't think we, we've shown them that, that we're making cuts and that we're watching out for the dollars, okay? And I, you know, I mean, they know, they know we need an increase, but they're just not willing to give us with what's been going on here.
And I know it's, it's probably screaming into the void in some ways, but, you know, even going back years ago when the local government fund got cut as drastically as it did, and I know that's a long time ago now.
The what?
But it really, what we noticed in the prosecutor's office, I will say, is we prepare a lot of the levies for our townships. It left them with no choice, especially the smaller town, townships, left them with no choice but to go to their voters and say, hey, I need money for police departments, fire departments, EMS. And it's an extra, you know, it's an extra tax burden on those folks now. And, and really, a lot of that, I, I think is, it was a direct result of that cut to the local government fund. And as a county, we lost a, a big share of that too.
And we're seeing that pushback now too. You know, we had a police levy in Cortland that went down. We have some school levies that are going down now that people are just pushing back. They're, they're taxing us.
Large, more a large part of the reduction emphasis of the local government fund at the state level was the legislature not trusting the local spend money appropriately, their one. Uh, and so that's what it's, it's led to. It's led to a lot more levy requests to get the funding. And the interesting thing about a levy is, you know, the, the, the public's approved. I mean, they're asked, they're willing, they've asked to pay the, the tax of some extent. A property tax levy is probably one of the purest forms of recognition of, you know, where the public is. Uh, and, and what their demands are for government services.
And then, real quick, just because somebody asked me to correct it. We only get one percent, and I was correct, point two five of that one percent, which only uses point seven five percent. Point two five of that one percent goes to the justice.
Uh, and you use that authority, yeah, or whatever that special section is where you can allocate it.
And that has to be dispersed between our prosecutor's office, our boards, our chair.
The budget that we have, we have twenty-nine million general fund coming back from our sales tax.
Yep.
Out of the sixty-six million that we have as a budget, only twenty-eight million.
The second one, the second one percent can be allocated to specific purposes, um, to pay up.
For the general fund, if you have hearings and do those processes, so.
Interesting.
Two or three.
Some account can't get a, can't get a sales tax increase without, without a vote. They have to go about every time they do sales type things, then the authority, because it's in their charter.
We get used either way, right?
You, you have, you, you can actually put it on, you can do it. You can put it on where they don't get a vote, you can put it on where they have a vote. There's, I hope there's three or four different ways to.
Again, there's about four different ways you can do it, depending on whether
Stacy was bringing up some type of an assessment that they do, like here on county, ten dollars per property or something.
Uh.
For habitable property, it has to have a structure on it, and that all goes, so they're not on one.
Uh, okay, you got where you can go. Nine one one funding was really interesting because as we tried to build the nine one one system out, just, you know, hey, you know, central calling for, for emergency response. Um, counties get to a point where they could figure out they wanted to do it, but they couldn't figure out the way they wanted to raise their local share for it. And so the legislature had started giving them special ways. And one of the ways is for property tax assessment, uh, just for that. A couple of them got the ability to put a sales tax on. Couple of them got the ability to, to do special property tax levies in a certain window. Uh, you know, that are in the general, you know, property tax code. And so it kind of got, you got down to, we got the nine one one system ready to go, now how we get to pay for it? And based on local, you know, consent or agreement or consensus that, you know, well, we could do this. Well, I've such, and it's, okay, we'll let you do that. So there are multitude ways to fund that process.
What about the cell phone thing she was talking about? We're getting three cents off a damn increase.
That's what, that's statewide, uh, the nine one one thing. And, um, committee, statewide committee had recommended seventy-four cents legislature.
We can't add our own county taxes to cell phones?
Some can and some can. You gotta, you gotta look at it. I don't, again, that was one of the things they gave them the option to do it. But no, right now, you can, generally speaking, you can, uh, put on your own, you know, something.
Yeah, I think the, the statute you were talking about was the, the charge per improved parcel that goes on to the real estate tax.
Yes.
It's, it's really a separate assessment. Like you said, it's, it's not really, it's part of your taxes. It goes on as a, in some counties, I think, are three dollars, some are ten dollars per year, or year and a half, depending on how it goes. I can't remember.
And the way, the way she sold it was, if there's a house there, they may have to call fire, may have to call nine one one someday, so the ten dollar fee covers it. It's like an insurance to call nine one one.
You guys are over time.
It's going to happen. We, we have to pick up a little ones tonight. Well, we would love to come back and do this some more.
Well, we apologize for the time. It, it seems like, ever since the two new commissioners came on board, these things have been running. I mean, I remember, I've been coming to the workshops, Danny. They were like an hour and a half.
Yeah, but that's because we were doing as much as we could do without being front page of the newspaper. We could bring up issues here, and none of us is running the press saying, Rick wants to do this, Eddie wants to do this, and But they, I understand, but they say there is transparency, and we're getting work done. Like I said, we're, we're paying for sins that go back twenty, thirty years on some of these things. Why we don't have a dog pound, or a dog pounds disrepair? Why the nine one ones there is in the morgue of a, of an old hospital? Why the coroner's cutting bodies up in a garage with the leg ball hanging out of his head?
I don't believe that one.
Joe, did you see the movie Saw? Um, so
So I mean, I mean, we'd be happy to come back, spend more time with you guys. I, I know Cheryl really would like to get up here and spend some time with you, but, um, and on individual subjects, that's fine.
We, we appreciate you coming up here. We want partnership with you. We want your mentorship and guidance. We don't want to reinvent the wheel. If there's a better way to do it, we could streamline it. We'd be remiss and stupid not to take your advice or not to at least ask the question. Tony brought up a question once, and one of the first meetings we had with Tony, and he said, we just got to be smart enough to say yes. So in a situation like this, we got to be smart enough to, to listen to you and
And, and, and maybe we have to look at going down there in February.
I, I think we should. I think three of us should. We'll, the taxpayers, to get as much knowledge as we can. Delay our meeting, and let's go down there, roll our sleeves up and learn, and there's going to be something we're going to pick up from eighty-eight counties in the state. Someone's going to have some advice for us on something that's going to help.
We pick up one thing.
That's right, it's worth a trip. That's right, we're going to do a legislative reception. Uh, at the state.
Well, we're going to come up here before then, but it's good to be with them again, you know. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time.
Thanks, man.
That's right.
There's room for Alex.
Christina, join the meeting.
Okay, motion, motion.